Welcome to the City Council's October 18th Regular City Council Meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating in City Council chambers in accordance with Public Health Guidelines for in-person meetings and participating remotely to promote social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce City Council members and staff present Vice Mayor Jen Willison, City Council members Drew Combs, Ray Mueller, and Cecilia Taylor. Staff present include City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Niradorti, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Karen, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and the members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash, and again echoing a welcome to our October 18th Regular City Council Meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment for any item on tonight's agenda. After the mayor calls for public comment on that item, for our virtual attendees, we'll ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're participating in person, you can step up to the podium. That concludes my introductions at this time. Thank you.
Agenda review. Agenda review provides advanced notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order and any requests from City Council members under City Council member reports. Staff will be providing an update on item F2. Does the City Council wish to pull or modify any agenda item?
Mayor Nash?
Yes, Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a modification to the Middle Avenue item.
I don't believe we're doing that at this point. Thank you. Is there anything under the... Any other agenda review? All right, we will proceed to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under public comment for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address or political jurisdiction in which you live. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. I will call for public comment at the appropriate time for members of the public to address the City Council on any item under Agenda Sections, Study Session, Consent Calendar, Regular Business, Informational Items. City Clerk Karen, please call for general public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine for anyone in person. You may step up to the podium. And our first speaker will be John McKenna.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, John.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers and city staff. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is John McKenna. I live in District Four. I'm respectfully asking you to take even bolder action on climate change and with an increased urgency. We are facing one of the greatest challenges of our lifetime. As a result of human-caused global warming, climate change is upon us. The devastating effects can be seen and felt everywhere. There's no need to go into details. As the increasing frequency and intensity of drought, wildfire, wildfires, and extreme weather events around the globe are obvious. We know what to do: stop burning fossil fuels and emitting greenhouse gases. Every day of delay or inaction results in a less livable planet for our children and future generations. Thankfully, the city updated its Climate Action Plan in 2020 to be net zero by 2030. I and countless others in the community greatly appreciate the city for taking this step to establish thoughtful goals aimed at mitigating and adapting to the effects of climate change. We are also grateful for the additional steps the city has recently taken to partner with block power and to eliminate curb-mitting fees for electrification. And yet, there is so much more to do in order to meet the goals outlined in the cap. Fortunately, striving for and reaching the goal of being net zero by 2030 comes with numerous co-benefits: better health, better and more efficient home appliances, environmental justice, quieter streets and cleaner air, and jobs, just to name a few. Admittedly, there are real challenges to achieving these goals, but doing everything necessary to satisfy the cap goals as fast as is humanly possible is simply our obligation. Arguably, addressing climate change should be our top priority for all of us, and preserving the environment should be front and center in every decision we make. For without a healthy and sustainable relationship with the environment, it becomes nearly impossible to preserve life as we know it on our one and only planet Earth. Fortunately, the recently enacted landmark federal climate bill, better known as the Inflation Reduction Act, will make reaching the goals of the city's cap far more cost-effective, especially as it relates to EV adoption and existing building electrification. Moreover, Peninsula Clean Energy just yesterday announced enhanced rebates and 0% financing for electric home upgrades. Should council act with the urgency that this crisis demands, history will look fondly on Menlo Park for being a leader on this courageous path towards real climate action. Menlo Park will continue to be part of the solution and an example for other municipalities to follow. A recent article in Scientific American exposes a false social reality and a belief that merely 40% of the population supports major climate mitigation, when in fact, a recent Yale poll shows that 80% of the population actually supports such actions. You have my support and that of countless others in the community that may not always share their concerns and their voice in this conversation to enact the programs and policies that are needed to solve the climate problem in an expeditious, equitable, and just manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Nisha Advani, followed by Bernard Klose.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers and city staff. My name is Nisha Advani. I've lived in Menlo Park for over 16 years. I am accompanied today by my colleague Shabana Ansari, who is also a resident. Today, we are here as advocates for victims and survivors of domestic violence to commemorate October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Nationally, October has been proclaimed as DV Awareness Month since 1987, and today, I request you to adopt a proclamation to mark it as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in our community of Menlo Park. To provide a few more specifics, we represent MITRI, an organization devoted to serving victims and survivors of DV since 1991, and want to take a few moments to talk about an epidemic that is pervasive in many homes, cities, states, country, and all over the world. Domestic violence is an ill that exists in all communities, irrespective of culture, religion, sexual orientation, financial status, and immigration realities. Domestic violence is a pattern of coercive, controlling behavior that can include physical abuse, emotional or psychological abuse, and also sexual or financial abuse. The research is staggering. It shows us that nearly 20 people per minute are abused by an intimate partner in the US. Nationwide, DB programs received an average of more than 20,000 calls a day. And there is strong evidence that the presence of a gun increases the risk of homicide by 500% in a situation involving domestic violence. Significantly increased requests for intervention and legal remedies over the past few years have shed even more light on the ongoing need for resources. There's never been a more poignant time for prevention-focused activities. State-based responses and community-based organizations, and members of the community in general, please, we all have our parts to play. Clearly, the need for a comprehensive plan to address domestic violence in our local communities is urgent, and we would be grateful if the city of Menlo Park would provide increased support to stepping up efforts. I urge you, the City Council and community members, to recognize domestic violence as a pressing issue to exemplify healthy relationships for children at home and to elect leaders and promote policies that contribute towards building a just and equitable future for all of us. I have provided a sample proclamation that MITRI is requesting you, the Menlo Park City Council, to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in our community. We would be happy to answer questions and discuss specific examples and suggestions at any time. In closing, I request you to review and endorse this proclamation at your earliest. Thank you so very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment for items not on the agenda. And our next speaker is Bernard Klaus.
Hi, thank you. My name is Bernard Klaus, and I live near Bay Road in Menlo Park and would like to make a request for some kind of action to make it a little bit safer. It's becoming increasingly dangerous to walk, ride a bike, or surprisingly, drive the speed limit on Bay Road. Twice, I've been passed by cars going the wrong direction on the other side to get past me and threatening me as I go by because I dare drive 30 miles an hour, the speed limit, and I've spoken to other people who've been through the same thing. I have been hit while walking. I've seen several people almost get hit. The stop signs at Bay and Ringwood are a vague suggestion for a lot of people. They come through, they slow down a little bit. The other day, I saw a woman walking her dog nearly get run over. And it's just turning into a pretty dangerous street. There's a lot of children in the mornings on bicycles, a lot of walkers, with and without dogs. And I'm just hoping that something can be done at some point. I don't know, speed bumps, cameras, some kind of enforcement, or just make people aware that they're being watched from time to time because it's gotten a little bit a little bit dangerous to be along there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you, and thank you very much to the public speakers on climate, domestic violence, and safer streets. I see Councilmember Combs would like to make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to really quickly reply to Mr. Klaus. And so, yeah, the safety along Bay Road has been something that has been top of mind for me personally and also for the city. Just a couple of weeks ago, the city manager, myself, and and several residents walked the Flat Triangle Neighborhood in Bay and looked at and talked through several possible safety measures. And so, it is something that is top of mind, and we are working on. So just want to, you know, respond in a general sense to that comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Study Session. Study Sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take any action on items addressed in Study Sessions. The City Council may provide direction to city staff for preparation of an additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the council for action. The Study Session item is E1, Provide Direction Regarding a Zero-Emission Landscape Equipment Ordinance to Regulate Gas-Powered Equipment Such as Leaf Blowers. To introduce the item is Sustainability Manager Rebecca Lucky.
Good evening, Mayor Nash, and Councilmembers and members of the public. I'm Rebecca Lucky, the Sustainability Manager for the city of Menlo Park, and I'm here tonight to go over our ZELI Ordinance Study Session item, which would look at regulating landscape, gas-powered landscaping equipment. And before I begin, I just want to also thank our sustainability contractor and Candace Almentrol. She's put a lot of time into this topic over the last few months and coordinating our surveys and research so that I could be prepared to present this to you tonight. So the request, and maybe before we begin, I just want to, maybe for the members of the public, just to make sure we all understand that there's no formal action being taken tonight. It's really just a study of how we would go about regulating gas-powered landscaping equipment. And the City Council is considering directing staff to prepare a draft zero-emission landscaping ordinance. And this would include public outreach and engagement that would lead up to a first reading of the ordinance in 2023. So that would be the juncture where a decision would likely be made. There are also alternative options that are presented in the staff report as well. So a little bit of background, in March of 2021, when the City Council was looking at their annual work plan, there was a lot of community feedback about gas-powered leaf blowers, the noise, the amount of fumes and smog that it produces, and the environmental impacts in relation to our Climate Action Plan. And so, at that time, the City Council directed the Environmental Quality Commission, the EQC, to review a prohibition on gas-powered leaf blowers. And in that same year, the EQC did recommend to City Council to prohibit gas-powered leaf blowers in line with how other cities have been implementing a similar kind of policy. And the EQC did present this recommendation to the City Council in November of last year. The City Council then directed staff to engage with landscaping stakeholders, so specifically the Bay Area Gardeners Association, and return back to City Council with a Study Session item to evaluate how enforcement and implementation would work and what the staff resource needs would be. So, staff did reach out to landscaping and gardening associations. So the Bay Area Gardeners Association doesn't appear to be operating anymore. I'm not sure if that was maybe after the pandemic. But there are definitely other associations. There's the California Landscape Contractors Association. They have a local chapter in San Francisco. We reached out both to the state association and the local chapter. We didn't receive response back. However, the California Landscape Contractors Association did have public information about their thoughts regarding zero-emission equipment in relation to state legislation that I'll talk about in the next slide. But their thoughts were that a quick transition would be difficult for their industry. However, the state did pursue moving forward with regulating gas-powered equipment in 2024. And I'll again talk about that soon. So because we didn't really receive any responses from associations, we launched an online survey that went out to 102 out of 130 Menlo Park landscaping and gardening professionals that had email addresses associated with their business license. And this included active and inactive business license is that we have in our system. So of that 102 emails that we sent out regarding the survey, we received five responses from landscaping and gardening professionals. And we found that three reported owning electric leaf blowers and two reported owning electric lawn mowers. And this, a few in this group also offered up their thoughts on a prohibition on gas-powered landscaping equipment with one supporting and one not supporting. And because we did advertise the online survey in our weekly digest and our social media platforms the city has, we did get feedback as well from property owners and other stakeholders. So we had a lot of, I'd say, like 122 responses, but not everyone was answering all the questions. So I think we got 107 solid respondents. And what we found through that is that community members actually do own quite a bit of electric landscaping equipment. So 35 own electric leaf blowers. There were also electric string trimmers, known as weed whackers, lawn mowers, chainsaws, and hedgers. And 19 respondents stated specific support for regulating gas-powered landscaping equipment. Nine expressed concerns about noise and air pollution, and we think that they would likely favor regulating gas-powered landscaping equipment. And eight stated that they were against electrification of landscaping equipment. So considerations that went into designing what the ZELI ordinance could look like. You're probably wondering, why aren't we just talking about leaf blowers? And so, the thought was looking at our Climate Action Plan and our goal to be carbon neutral by 2030, and looking at all the landscaping equipment could help us reach greater greenhouse gas reductions, also improve air quality, and just overall health and well-being of workers in the community. And looking at all of the landscaping equipment, we try to look at a phased approach by a certain date. And it does also build upon Assembly Bill 1346 that was passed to prohibit the sale, not the use, of gas-powered small off-road engine equipment. And that starts January 1st, 2024, and includes all small landscaping equipment. And there's a lot of nuances to this piece of legislation. There is the potential where there could still be a sale of gas-powered equipment even after 2024. Really, the bill targets manufacturers to start making models and only producing those in 2024. But the hope really is that because they understand this legislation is coming, that they're going to start to produce zero-emission landscapes, so it'll be ready for shelves much sooner than 2024. The state has also allocated $30 million in incentives for landscapers and gardeners. And actually, the applications are going to be, and their voucher is actually starting November 7th, so it's very soon. It would not include property owners or businesses that don't have landscaping or gardening as their primary operation. And so, the City Council may also want to consider, kind of, how do we support property owners or businesses that may not be eligible for the state incentive? There are other communities that do have incentive programs, Redwood City does, San Mateo as well. And then other cities that have prohibitions on landscaping equipment, mostly gas-powered leaf blowers. There are three in Santa Clara County, so Palo Alto is one of them. And the cities in Santa Clara County probably have the oldest ordinances on the books. There's one in San Mateo County, Port Dola Valley, two in Alameda County, Oakland and Berkeley. And Oakland does include string trimmers. And then there's eight cities in Marin County as well that have a prohibition on gas-powered leaf blowers. So the health and environmental concerns, again, have been brought up. There's a lot of research into this. And the California Air Resources Board has dug into this pretty deeply. And for small off-road engines, which are called SOARs, 86% of that really, that population, 86% of it, is landscaping equipment. And if you look at the state's total population of SOAR equipment, the emissions really do exceed our total population of emissions that come from cars in the state. It's kind of hard to believe because we don't see them as much as we see cars. But CARB has, California Air Resources Board has found that using a leaf blower for just one hour is equal to driving 15 hours, so from LA to Denver. And it does emit chemicals that do cause a lot of harm for the respiratory system, for cardiovascular health as well. So the proposed ordinance elements would include regulating landscaping equipment on all properties, including residential, commercial, and city properties. Enforcement of zero-emission leaf blowers and string trimmers would begin July 1st, 2024. So that's six months after the, after manufacturers are required to only produce zero-emission equipment. And the reason why leaf blowers and string trimmers are put together is that they're pretty similar in how they operate and the battery packs. And so, they're easier to address at first. The enforcement of all the other types of landscaping equipment, lawn mowers, hedge trimmers, and chainsaws would begin January 1st, 2029. And hours of operation would remain unchanged for what we currently have as noise limitations. And the responsible party for any enforcement would be the property owner, not the landscaping or gardening professional. And the reason why we looked into this a little bit more is that the cities that did have zero-emission equipment for quite some time and were enforcing it upon the landscaping or gardening professionals, it was very difficult. Mostly because when city personnel shows up, the gardening professional or landscape professional is already gone. A lot of times, they're employees of a larger organization, and they don't have decision-making power. And tying it to the property owner helps to provide an incentive for the property owner to work with their landscaper or gardener to try to figure out the best way to comply with a zero-emissions landscaping ordinance. And the citations to the property owner would follow the citywide administrative citation ordinance that's currently underway and will be brought to the City Council soon. And because enforcement of our first phase of this doesn't begin until July 1st, 2024, there's a good amount of time for the City Council to review what those citations would look like. So as I mentioned earlier, this is not the final decision. And we're looking at proposed outreach between December 2022 and April of 2023 to kind of lead up to that first reading of a potential ordinance. And that would, the outreach would look like information on our city's website where people can subscribe to receive updates, sending a mailer to all property owners, and sending one mailer to landscaping and gardening professionals so that we can point them to the information on the website, help them find the surveys, understand when what meetings and when they'll be occurring. We can also include information in the city's billing insert that goes out in January and record and hold one virtual meeting for the community and professionals as well. And we could post the recording on our website. And we can also launch another online survey. So the first survey we did, we didn't want to put the cart for the horse because we wanted to, you know, understand what the City Council was thinking about as far as drafting an ordinance. But it would be good to do another online survey just to talk about what the draft ordinance would mean and who it would impact and get feedback. So operational impacts, so before the ordinance is adopted, if the council chooses to move forward in 2023, there are staff resources from various departments and divisions that would be involved as well as after ordinance adoption. So, leading up to this study session, there's been a lot of conversations with the police department and public works as well as the city attorney's office and public engagement in coordinating of all the tasks that fall under this project. And then, of course, after ordinance adoption as well, there is, you know, the opportunity to really educate and let the community know what's coming so that there is a sense of feeling prepared and having compliance at the, once we begin enforcement in July of 2024. I will also mention that we're exploring various enforcement approaches to be more innovative of how we address complaints we hear from low-risk safety issues that occur in the community. Traditionally, in other communities, code enforcement does handle municipal code violations. And enforcement can really range from education and warnings to administrative citations. And one thing that did really come up from the research as well is that communities that have had a gas-powered leaf blower prohibition in place, there continued to be an issue with trying to address the amount of complaints and getting compliance. And so, Palo Alto did hire a code enforcement officer to have addressed the number of complaints that they were receiving. And hopefully, once they get to a good compliance rate, then the amount of, you know, enforcement needed would be reduced. So we would probably likely ask to hire an additional staff. For city maintenance activities, it would require purchasing zero-emission equipment. There are incentives available for municipalities or local government to replace gas landscaping equipment with zero-emission equipment. We also do have city contracts, contractors that we use to maintain some of our public areas, and those may need to be amended to address any labor increases. So these contractors could likely and probably apply for the state incentive program. But there are potential labor increases, and even for our own operations during the fall when there's heavy leaf droppings. We have a lot of beautiful trees in the city that do drop leaves during the fall. we have a lot of beautiful trees in the city that do drop leaves during the fall. And because of that, electric equipment may not be as powerful. They certainly are, they've come a long way and CARB has had a road show for a while showing and demonstrating that they, they can meet the needs. But during the fall, the leaves are wet, it's, they, they do tend to, there's a lot of them. And so as far as being able to manage that kind of workload, it may mean that we need to outreach the community to help them understand like why there might be a slower response to cleaning up leaves during the fall or why some activities are being delayed during that season to address cleaning up all the leaves. So again, tonight's request is to consider directing staff to prepare a draft zero emission landscaping ordinance as proposed in this presentation and the report. And that also includes undertaking public outreach and engagement leading up to the first reading of the ordinance in twenty twenty-three. Alternative options are presented in the staff report and they include, you know, maybe not regulating as much equipment and just focusing on leaf blowers. Also looking at how the city council would like to add to or limit the public engagement part of it or public outreach. And so those are all items that we can definitely have talked through and address as we move forward on this topic. So thank you so much. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment virtually on study session item E1, provide direction regarding a zero emission landscape equipment, ordinance to regulate gas powered equipment such as leaf blowers. We ask that you engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landlady or a cell phone, you can press star nine for our in-person public comment for our study session item E1. Ask that you line up at the podium at this time. And our first speaker will be David Axelrod, followed by Bernard Close.
Hello, thank you very much. My name is David Axelrod. I'm a resident in Menlo Park. I live near downtown. I support this, the commission's proposal here to work on this topic. As you know, some of you may know, I've submitted a public comment in November of last year regarding the, my concerns about the health effects of these small engines that are really ubiquitous in our environment. I'm a pediatric cardiologist and pediatrician at Stanford, so I'm really concerned about the health effects for our kids. I'm learning that government, the wheels of government may turn a little slower than, than I'd like. But I wonder if it would be possible for our city to get an, an easy win by at least working on that last bullet point in slide nine that was just shown, which is the city and county properties, or rather, the city properties that are managed by our, I presume, our city government. I was recently in a public park in Menlo Park where kids were playing on a playground and one of the gas powered leaf blowers that was probably a city contractor or someone working for the city was blowing and just the smell and the, and the noise with the kids right there is, is really quite concerning. And so that seemed to me to be something that would possibly be easier to enforce. I think it would at least really get the ball rolling. I think this is a really great initiative. July of twenty twenty-four does seem like a long way off to me, but I understand there's a ramp up. And so I wonder if the city would consider moving quicker with at least the, the areas in the, in the city that, that they can control. I think it is important also to look at the other communities that have done some very creative ways of enforcing this. Some of those cities that were listed enacted these bans in nineteen ninety, I think in Berkeley, and nineteen ninety-one, I think in Los Gatos. We're talking about thirty years that other people have done this. And so I think that our city really does have the precedent to do this. It's been proven in the past. I think, you know, if your government can't provide clean air and clean water, that to me is like kind of a fundamental problem. And, and there are times when, even in our public parks, when the air is just not clean. So I think I'd love to see our city move faster on that. Thank you very much for, for listening for the time and I'll, I'll mute myself now.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Bernard Close, and then I'll be turning to our in-person.
Oh, hi, this is Bernard Klaus. Two quick things. First, there was a mention in the presentation, which, by the way, overall, I, I found really encouraging. Last year, some of the discussions on this topic kind of left a bad taste in my mouth, but this time it, it felt really, really promising. So thank you for that. The, the quick question about it was, it was a reference to the time prohibitions, time ordinance about when the equipment is allowed to be used. And I was just wondering what that ordinance is, what are the, the times that machinery can be used and what specific ordinance could be cited if we need to, to apply that? Because people around here, this neighborhood, they get started often around seven thirty in the morning, including weekends. And I, I assume some of that's out of band, but I'm not really sure. The other point is, I believe in Menlo Park, there's a prohibition against using the gas powered leaf blowers on spare the air days. And when I've called the police department a few times about that, once they did send somebody out, they just missed the gardener, you know, that's going to happen the next time. They weren't sure if it was really an ordinance. You know, either way, I don't think that's very well known. And in fact, not too long ago, during one of the last spare the air alerts, I was driving by Menlo Leatherton High School and they were busy outside with their gas powered leaf blowers at the high school. So, you know, they didn't get the memo. So I, I would think that a lot of people haven't and don't even know what to do about it if they see it happening. So that might be another little bit of education along the way to, to help out a bit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And then again, I'll turn to our in-person speaker and if you can state your name for the record.
My name's Sean Van Drill. I live, well, it's my first time doing this, so excuse me if I'm not as articulate. Thank you for inviting me, Councilwoman. I live in downtown Menlo Park. This has been an issue. I didn't realize it was in the conversation for as long as it seemingly has been. And I, I reached out about a year ago about this and have been motivated to get involved for the first time with the Menlo Park city government for this issue. I just wanted to make the point, I, I thought the presentation was really encouraging. And I definitely like the direction that it seems like the proposed city ordinance is going. I also wanted to echo the first commenter's point about potentially pushing up the timeline. I know things take time and implementation, you know, there's complexities there. But sooner would, would be nicer if, if it's at all possible. And I also just wanted to point out the, where I think this is a particularly salient issue, I think, is in higher density neighborhoods. I've noticed, I, I live in a fourplex and around a bunch of other fourplexes. And I noticed most of the landlords use landscaping services. And there, I think it's the majority of the days of the week, we have landscaping services in a lot adjacent to ours. And because we have no air conditioning, that means especially in the summer, we have to close all of our windows. And it gets hot. And when we open them, we have the smell of exhaust, not to mention all of the dust that's kicked up. So it was just kind of another, another consideration that I think is particularly relevant in higher density neighborhoods. But otherwise, I think all of this sounds really good and I appreciate the work you're all doing.
Thank you, Sean. So our next speaker will be Jennifer Johnson, followed by Leah Elkins. Jennifer, it looks like you might have put your hand down, so I'm going to go to Leah. But Jennifer, if you did want to speak, please do reengage that hand.
Okay. Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I wanted to say thank you very much to the city for bringing this forward at this point. And to the prior speakers, thank you for your excellent points as well. Again, and I do want to echo the, a common concern that I've heard here that this July first, twenty twenty-four date doesn't seem soon enough. And I think it would be great to be able to tie it more directly to the, the ban, the sale ban on January first of twenty twenty-four. I know that's just a little more than a year from now, but I believe that it could be done, that the, the the ordinances have been written by other cities. It won't take that long to, to write an ordinance and education and outreach to interested parties could, could be done over the second half of the year. And then we could consider even a grace period for the first six months of, of the ordinance while people came to know about it. But in that way, we could at least save some more time where we wouldn't have to be living with these machines that are harming our health and the health of our children as well as our peace and quiet. And you all know my feelings on all of the other aspects of gas leaf blowers in particular, but also all other lawn equipment and the, and the pollution that they cause. So I just wanted to add my feelings about the timeline. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Jennifer Johnson, followed by Bill Kirsch. Jennifer, are you able to engage a microphone? Perfect. There we go. Okay. Thank you.
I didn't see the clock change.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Johnson. I'm a resident in Menlo Park. I live in Sharon Heights. And I live in a condo community next to several other condo communities that all seem to employ landscaping services that use gasoline powered equipment. And as another speaker already mentioned, we also live in a building that doesn't have air conditioning. The sound and although I could completely live with the sound, it's the fumes I can't live with. It is really overpowering. And there will be five different people walking around our building with all of the gas powered equipment. And the fumes are so strong that we stay, we have to stay inside and keep our windows and doors closed. And it's just oppressive. And looking at the health factors involved with the gasoline powered equipment, it's, it's just really shocking how terrible they are for everybody breathing in the fumes as well as the people who have to use them. Who I also think would hugely benefit from this prohibition in our city. I also would love to see the timeline moved up. And one thing I, I'm not sure if was in the presentation because I had to step away for a second is that I do think that there needs to be some way of accommodating people who are independent, you know, a, a single person who's a gardener for several families versus the big companies. I think that it may take a little bit longer for someone who is, you know, has their own small business to do this. And they might hopefully would be eligible for more incentives than some of these larger companies. But yes, thank you for, thank you for listening and I'm really glad that Menlo Park is, is addressing this issue and willing to move forward on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Bill Kirsch, and this will be the final call for public comment on our study session item E1.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
City council members, thank you so much for your, your work for our city. I greatly appreciate it, no matter how things turn out. I am in strong favor of getting rid of gas leaf blowers. You know, I, I love Menlo Park, but when I think about the things that degrade the quality of life, the gas powered leaf blowers are possibly number one or number two, maybe behind speeding cars and lack of good bicycling infrastructure. But they, I live on Partridge Avenue and in Allied Arts. There's gas leaf blowers going every day, seems like all day. I work at home. I like to have my windows open during the day. And I find I have to close them all the time. And I, I just think they're a real nuisance. And I think also that leaf blowers are overused in our community. I asked my gardener not to use a leaf blower. I told him I would gladly take a broom to my driveway and ask them just to, you know, do other gardening chores. You know, leaf blowers just blow all the good stuff off the dirt and blow up dust in the air. So I'd like to see gas leaf blowers eliminated, but I'd also like to see if it's possible some way to educate the public that, that leaf blowers are being overused in general in our gardens. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And seeing no further hands or members of the audience at the podium. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. And thank you very much to all the work staff has put into this. And also special kudos to Leah Elkins, who, along with the EQC, has also been championing this issue. So we are now open for city council discussion. Is, does anyone want to start? Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. And I also want to thank all of the speakers tonight. This is one of those topics we get a lot of interest in, and I think we all know why, especially with many of us working from home now. Since the pandemic, we all know what it feels like to hear those go all day long. So I, I want to start by asking some questions of Ms. Lucky specifically related around the timing. That was a common theme. And to Ms. Elkins' point, is there a way to have a grace period or some, you know, we don't, and we let people know there's six months that we can somehow seek, make this at the same time as the January first. Or what are your thoughts on timing? And then, and then the secondary question was, if we go forward with the, with the staff recommendation of the broader ordinance, it looks like the gas leaf blowers and the weed whackers come first. And then in twenty twenty-nine, the other equipment comes. And just thoughts on, how did you come up with twenty twenty-nine and is there flexibility on that timing as well?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. So moving up the timeline for string trimmers and leaf blowers, I, I think we could look at it. I, I can't commit to, you know, if, if we can move it up or not, but we can definitely evaluate that as we move forward to a first reading and, and potentially have some, some options. I think, I think from a staff perspective, we'd like to just check in with the, the industry too, just to make sure that that's doable and just do some further analysis on, on that possibility.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I do want to let the public know that while there might be kind of copy and paste ordinances and whatnot, it really comes down to the implementation and enforcement that has a much longer ramp up. So I do want to acknowledge that staff, it's not quite as easy as it may look to us laypeople. So I want to thank you for the work you have ahead of you if we decide to go with this. And then Ms. Lucky, I don't know if you were going to continue about the second half.
Yeah, so for the remaining landscaping equipment, again, that date can be flexible. You could push it to July first of twenty twenty-nine or try to see, if you push it up again, I think we just need to do a little bit more analysis to understand and at the market performance of the other items. Again, we do know that they're pretty comparable, but a, a check-in with, with the community and professionals would be ideal. So we felt that the twenty twenty-nine So we felt that the 2029 timeline was was really sufficient to to probably to get people to where they need to go. They've taken advantage of the state incentives, have understand what the equipment can do and and still kind of work toward replacing that equipment sooner so that we can experience the greater benefits.
Thank you, Ms. Lucky. And then I did meet earlier today with Mayor Nash, Commissioner Leah Elkins, who spoke, and a community member Lisa Williams, who has also really been championing championing this. And one of the things we were discussing was the outreach. And I know that you worked hard to try to reach gardeners, and thank you for providing your outreach plan. One idea that we had was potentially to put leaflets on gardening trucks. And I actually talked to the city manager briefly about this of staff potentially making collateral, letting people know about the rebates and about, you know, the upcoming outreach having to do with these. And then Commissioner Elkins has a wide list of folks very motivated to help with gas leaf blowers who might help be able to help distribute those, because we know that could be staff time-intensive. So I just wanted to to alert you to that possibility, and of course, we want to make sure that no one's advocating for anything. But if there is an appropriate use of community volunteers to help with that effort, I think there may be an opportunity there. There was also a discussion around Portola Valley has a system where residents can, I believe it's called ACT, in, no, it's called something in Portola Valley, but it's basically like the Menlo Park Act or C Click Fix, where there's an option in that app where residents can report offenders or violators. And so I I believe our current system doesn't have a landscaping option, so that might be something for staff to look into if that's a viable option. And then my final question has to do with the added staff position. And we're always, you know, hesitant to have staff, but we always want a lot of things done too. It looks like we are, still need to be staffing up our code enforcement and our community service officers. So can you speak a little bit more about the recommendation for adding a staff position? And if this is something we could start without and then revisit if necessary?
Yeah, I I think the ideas that you presented, the leaflets and putting them on maybe gardening or landscaping, where they're working is a great idea, and we can certainly have implement that as part of the public outreach. And thank you to Commissioner Elkins and and volunteering and figuring out how we can move it along as far as our outreach. Let's see, so and I think using Menlo Act, we've we've had discussions about that. And I think, yeah, there there may be potentials where there are sometimes trade-offs, and we we've got to talk to the city attorney and and some a few others and and police. But the staff resource request, you know, it'll depend, and I guess we can check in probably with Portola Valley to see how their implementation is going. So I know they did a lot of outreach prior to the implementation of their ordinance. And so it's just kind of understanding how to how to move forward, and and as you mentioned, we have vacant positions right now in code enforcement and and in community officers as well. So I I can't probably give a definitive answer. But I think I can say that we're looking at various ways to tackle it, to reduce the request for additional staff resources. Just signaling kind of what other communities have experienced, and and so trying to come full circle on and how do we get there quicker? So the community can feel relief and and to what they're seeking as well. But definitely noted it down as what are other opportunities to kind of limit those that that type of request?
And then I think my last question was about the staff position. And then I also want to, I have one more question, Ms. Lucky, is Ms. Elkins also, no, I believe it was Ms. Johnson, brought up kind of smaller gardener operations that might kind of have a hardship. And I'm curious if you have any data or or sense even anecdotally of like what percentage of leaf blowing folks in Menlo Park are mom and pop and what are part of larger gardening businesses, but if you've thought at all about kind of hardship rebates or assistance for smaller operations.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Wilson. So a couple of things, I did reach out to to the California Air Resources Board and ask them of specific questions around, you know, what happens with very small business, self-employed individuals. And the feedback I got from the Air Resources Board is that there are opportunities for the manufacturers or the dealers to work with these these smaller businesses or self-employed individuals where they could cover the cost of all of the equipment for it for them to transition. So there's there's that aspect. I do think there are some nuances of, you know, do they have a landscaper landscaping contract license versus, you know, a gardener, a gardener that may not, you know, have those licenses to be able to access the incentives. And so I think the state is still working through that, and that probably speaks to also the staff position, which is, you know, in order to kind of address that equity component of helping people access these incentives, like how do we help someone get from A to Z in understanding like how how it works, because even for for me, it was looking into the core program or the incentive program, there was a lot of acronyms. There's a lot of different websites, a lot of different contacts. And so to try to kind of navigate that process to, you know, a staff support could really help, because we're not, I I don't think we're trying to aim to penalize people, but we're trying to get people to go into the right direction. And that does take some conversation and some time.
So I just wanted to follow up on something you said. So if, and I guess this makes sense, but if, for example, if I have a gardener who is just him and his family, basically, and they have one truck and they, I I don't know what their licensing is. They would not be eligible then for any of these rebates or programs. You have to have some type of certification.
Yeah, there is flexibility, and that's what I was trying to get to with with the CARB staff. But it looks like they they do have their requirements pretty solid on, you know, you need to have certain kind of licensee, but you can prove in other ways, like you know, invoices, business receipts that show, yes, that, you know, you are a person who's doing this, and they they recognize that there might be some people outside of those boundaries, and they're trying to work through it through a specialized program. Not necessarily trying to advertise it, but maybe I just didn't do a good job right now, because now I'm advertising it. But they they do understand that there is a gap there and working through it, and I I think that again is something that we want to continue to monitor as we bring forward an ordinance in 2023 of how are we able to support those who are self-employed, maybe don't have all the criteria, and making sure that they don't fall through the cracks.
Thank you, Ms. Luckys. I appreciate your answers, and do you want me to give my thoughts now or turn it over to other questions? Okay, so I feel like we can't ban these things soon enough. They're horrible for all the reasons that our residents have articulated beautifully. They're loud, they're smelly, I can't stand riding into clouds of the dust particles when I'm on my bike, yada, yada. So I'm supportive of the staff recommendation for the ordinance they're looking at. And I would like staff to look at potentially moving up that date if possible. And I'm not sure exactly what other feedback, but I'm sure you'll capture it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
I'm sorry, Mayor Nash, may I go? Because I apologize. I don't need to step away from the meeting real quick, so. And I apologize, Councilmember Combs. So just very quickly, I'm supportive of staff's recommendations, but I I think that what I'd like to see, you know, we can do all the outreach in the world that we want to do. I don't think it's gonna reach everybody, and I think what's going to end up happening is when we go to implement, people are going to hear about for the first time. So I'm really interested in looking at is on first sight, a process put together where it's first citation, second citation. And then in that period of time hardship taken into account, when hardship's taken into account for people who are trying to get into compliance, what happens then? I don't think, I think we could do all the leaf lighting we want to do in the world, and we're not, and the 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 real issue is going to come up when we actually enforce. And so I really want to pay close attention to the enforcement mechanisms and how that process takes place and and how we are agile in that. So and with that, I apologize, but I need to step away, Mayor Nash, and we'll return after a brief briefly leaving.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nash, and just following up on on what Councilmember Mueller said, the enforcement mechanism is towards the property owner, right? Although the actual user is is impacted to the extent to which their businesses is 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 reduced. You know, I I have to say I am, the the stat regarding emissions was was pretty insane. When you look at it in comparison, certainly to car emissions. But but I have to admit some that I am somewhat conflicted about this discussion. As as we have had this discussion over some months or years now, it has struck me that, again, you know, one of the communities most impacted mostly men of color, many of them immigrants, who are who are gardeners, have never been a part of this discussion. I've never, you know, come and made public comment. They're they're not, the the people that have called me up or emailed me and said, hey, can we, you know, meet for for coffee at Cafe Zoe so I can talk to you about this? And and so they've been, they've been missing, and 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 I feel that, like, right, that that a key participant, a key stakeholder in this discussion has has not been involved. And and so like, and and we're we're shifting to like, what is the prohibition? What is the ordinance? What is the restriction that we can enshrine? Without ever actually, you know, looking at like, what's the outreach we can do without an ordinance, like, right? What's the outreach and engagement we can do with this community regarding, and they being the ones that are most impacted by the the negative aspects of 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 these these gas-powered devices? Like, what have we done as a community? Like, away from this discussion about, well, let's have an ordinance that prohibits it, right? And and again, I remind you, like, yeah, a lot of us are are working at home, and and a lot of our our residents and our constituents are bothered by it and certainly suffer some some ill effects. You know, but the person who has it strapped on its back is suffering the most ill effects, but because of their station, their their economic station, that's what they have to do. Or that's what they feel they have to do, or that's the options they have to to make to make money. And in some generations past in my family, that was my grandfather, that was my great-grandfather. You know, those people doing gardening, landscaping service jobs, because that was the only option that they had. And so, again, didn't mean to go on a syllable quee about all of this, but it is, it is something that I have felt slightly uncomfortable with as as we engage in this. And so I don't know what direction I can give you. I'm I'm certainly not unsupportive of this. I'll go to the double negative route. But but I will say that, like, I'm going to be looking more at what is the the outreach, like, right? Separate from an ordinance, separate from a prohibition, like, what have we really done as a community to go to those most impacted by the negative effects now and who will be most impacted by, you know, prohibitions, like, what have we done really to to engage them? And and I I think that that's a valid question we should, we should ask ourselves. And I will say that, like, just as a side issue, that, you know, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about staff constraints with regards to, you know, services engagement that the city did pre-pandemic. And so it's it's somewhat challenging for me to say that, like, okay, now let's go out, take on this new obligation and hire someone to it to do it when when what I've heard so far is that we can't deliver on some of the things we have historically and traditionally delivered on because of because of staffing constraints. So those are, those those are my thoughts. Again, I'll I'll end with, I I'm not unsupportive. I definitely definitely see the benefits of of not having these these devices in our in our community, in our world. But but I also know, you know, the situation on the ground is is not is not as easy as it is it may look from the dais.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, please.
Thank you, Mayor Nash, and I have a question for Ms. Lucky. And and that is, I I am supportive of having a ban on the leaf boards or any gas-powered landscaping items, but just wanted to find out if CARB has some type of outreach material, whether it is a digital video or printed material that they've already created. Does something already exist, is my question?
They definitely have a good website material for their their incentive program and why switching there. I need to probably look a little bit further if there are any kind of materials that are good for kind of all audiences, because some of the material is pretty technical. But we definitely can use kind of what they've they've produced so far and look at, you know, Portola Valley and what they use to educate their landscapers and gardeners on before they went to implementation. And also, I think the city of Oakland, they they have probably the more recent one. They started implementing the string trimmers and gas-powered leaf blower prohibitions in 2021.
Okay, and my next question is, there's a a grant in the staff report, I believe it's a grant that would help the city, if we apply for it, that would help the city replace our own equipment, that would roughly be about $186,000 replacement. Would the grant cover that total cost, or would the city need to contribute?
So our understanding is that it would cover the cost to replace the equipment. It is on a first-come, first-served basis each year. So we would just need to make sure we get our application and on time. They do have priority applicants that they try to address first, like environmental justice areas. So we, if we were, since we're kind of understanding where the city council might want to go, I think we can start to put the ball into motion to towards applying for it and having a better answer by the time we have the first reading as well.
So that would be sometime within the next few months?
Yeah, so so the outreach we're looking at between December and April, so probably the first half of 2023.
And with the with the outreach outreach, this is, this is what I'm supportive of. I'm supportive of this, starting with the cities first, with the city's equipment. I agree with Councilmember Combs regarding the the outreach. I think the outreach for the folks who work in the field needs to happen definitely more robustly. And those conversations need to be bilingual, not just a printed material in different languages, but also a conversation. And considering most of the gardeners in my community start at 7:00 AM, that would be a great time to do outreach, and I'm not sure if there's any capacity to actually engage our neighborhood associations or small groups that already exist to help the city do the outreach more more quickly or actually sooner. And the other is the time that the ordinance, it's 8:00 AM, not 7:00 AM. So that definitely needs to be included in the outreach. I don't believe the average gardener knows that information.
Thank you, Councilmember Taylor.
And my other question is, as far as the the timeline, I know that it is is basically to give the city a And my other question is, um, as far as the, the timeline, I know that it is, is basically to give the city enough time and then give the folks who use the equipment enough time, um, to, um, participate. When, and I'm not sure if it was in the staff report, but when does this buyback program start or any of the incentives? Is that more in 2024?
So the state incentives are actually going to start in a couple of weeks. So right now, uh, California Air Resources, Air Resources Board is determining their manufacturers, who will be the dealers of the zero emission equipment. And so the manufacturers need to get their applications in actually this month because CARB is wanting to launch this the first week of November. So again, to try to really get everyone in line to kind of start doing this much sooner than 2024.
And is that information available, um, in flyers or is it?
It, it can be easily probably kind of organized into a flyer. A lot of their information's on their core website, uh, which is not even kind of, it's kind of an offshoot of, of the Air Resources Board's website. But it is, it is kind of, you, you've got your manufacturers and then you've got, if you're a landscaper or professional, you have to go to a different tab. So I think we could probably help have a step-by-step guide of how do you get there and, and apply? And if you need help, you know, how, how can we potentially assist you and, and kind of navigate? And they are very responsive, I will say. So I've emailed CARB's staff a few times this week and I've gotten responses back. Um, so that was really good.
And is there opportunity, and I think this was in the staff report, to have, um, a leaflet or some information in, um, a utility bill or a water bill?
Yeah, the, the solid waste bill. So our bills typically, I, I think they still go out every three months and ours would start in January for the first quarter of the year.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Lucky.
Thank you.
Thank you. So it sounds like, uh, essentially we are in agreement to proceed with the staff recommendation. There's an interest in, um, working with the gardeners, especially smaller gardeners, um, and having multilingual pamphlets to distribute. I would certainly, um, add to that, that since the residents are hiring the gardeners and also the ones who are going to be, um, the, for lack of a better word, target of enforcement. It seems that, uh, that would be another approach is to make sure that our residents, um, know it and perhaps, and have material to work with their gardeners. And also, um, know about it. I believe you said it was the November 7th date when the, when applications are available for the rebates. Is perhaps some of our residents either have their own equipment or, um, would be working with their, um, landscapers to at least provide information, um, to the equipment. On the comment, um, just to echo what, um, has been said, I think it's really important to, because the landscapers are the ones who are most affected by the, um, noxious fumes. Whatever we can do to facilitate that, um, would be beneficial. If anyone has any, um, thoughts as to how to, um, make more inroads into the, um, with any landscaping organizations, um, that would obviously be beneficial. Please provide the, you know, send an email to us. The I think whatever we can do to work with CARB and also other cities to, um, use their material, obviously with so many different, um, cities already, um, using the, having gas powered equipment, um, for ordinances. It seems that there should be plenty of material out there. We don't necessarily have to recreate our own. And also the idea of, um, I believe, uh, Councilmember Taylor was saying with using CARB's material, I think is an excellent, um, whatever we can do to leverage other materials is obviously beneficial. I echo others saying that, um, yes, we should be working with the cities', uh, gas powered, um, equipment first and, um, doing whatever, and turning our equipment into the, um, electric models. And please let us know, um, how to proceed with the grants or whatever. I also, um, several speakers talked about the overuse of the equipment. Spending quite a bit of time around the city. I know that our city gardeners do that as well. There will often be, um, it, well, not often, but I, um, not infrequently see leaf blowers going after a couple of leaves when, um, perhaps we, um, should look at the standards that we have as far as how many leaves we can, um, tolerate on the ground and just what we consider, um, presentable. Let's see, I guess, uh, anything, the leaflets were, um, on work vehicles. And then also, yes, everyone, um, I think was in favor of moving up the timing, whatever possible, and possibly having a grace period, um, to facilitate moving the, the timing more quickly. And also the, um, using an app to, uh, perhaps do reporting, even if that's just to, um, send a, send the material to the property owner, um, not necessarily to, um, to give them, uh, um, to find them, but just to provide information, um, that would be helpful. And I would not, um, I am, I hope that we can work with it, with our current staff and not add a headcount at this point for this. Um, I am also concerned about, um, it just, how much we need. Um, anything that I missed in the summary? Anyone else have anything to add? Vice Mayor Wilson.
Yeah, uh, Mayor Nash, I think that was extremely comprehensive. And then in terms of, um, kind of the carrot, I guess we could call it. Maybe staff could put together, you know, because these rebates are going to go live in like two weeks. Um, and some of this other work might take a little longer to ramp up. Maybe there's a bilingual flyer, one page English, uh, other side, Spanish, that, um, staff could, you know, put out in the newsletter to homeowners to give to their gardening staff when they come. Or to, to mail with their checks or whatever, um, as a positive thing, here's this rebate coming, get, get ahead of the curve. Or for more information, you know, um, there's, CARB has a, a question and answer line about it. But I, I do agree that would be great to kind of incentivize people to make the transition first, um, as we get ready for, uh, ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, just really quickly, I, I add, um, as, as this says, I know we'll be talking about this. Um, you, you know, I have taken up on myself to, um, tell my block and a couple of other blocks, um, talk to some, some, some gardeners. Um, one person I talked to actually lives in Modesto and commutes in, in the morning because he was like, this is where, this is where the jobs are. To give you some sense of, of like, so, you, you know, he, he's not showing up at a city council meeting. I mean, he's not being heard. He's getting up at the crack of dawn, coming in, you know, commuting into the southern portion of, of the, the peninsula. And then as soon as he's done with his jobs, he's, he's back, um, headed back. Um, I would say if I could give like, um, some marking advice to the city, I would say like, if there are like a couple, like kind of like case studies that you guys could like highlight, maybe it's where the resident like has the leaf blower, like, right? And sort of talk about like that, are, or issues where they, you know, have arranged that, that there is, um, you know, uh, electrical outlet access. And, and so it's, it's a cord and that works for, for them. Obviously in, in some cases it's just, um, you know, ba- battery powered, um, which, you know, I know, um, there are limits to how long they last and, and the power for, for some of those machines. But it would be great if, if, you know, we could just like, you know, highlight a couple of use cases, how this is working, like, right? And, and how it might take different, different forms.
Thank you. One last comment on that is also rakes work really well. And the, um, litter on the ground in, um, basically allowing the leaves to accumulate on the ground is great for water conservation as well as the health of the landscaping. Does staff need any additional, um, direction?
Mayor, Mayor Nash, no, this is great. Uh, took down a lot of really great notes. A, a lot of really good ideas to help us with the public outreach and kind of moving forward even after, if the council does adopt a ZELI ordinance. So I really appreciate all the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. It's nice to be moving forward. Appreciate all the work. Consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya, can you please provide the update on item F2? Approve an amendment to the agreement with AECOM to conduct the next phase of work for the Caltrain grade separation project.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Nash. Members of the council, Nikki Nagaya, Public Works Director. So I just wanted to take a moment and acknowledge, uh, some comments we received from residents of the Felton Gables and other neighborhoods, uh, requesting some additional scope items, uh, to be added to the technical studies and to follow up on those discussions. So, uh, when we first brought this scope to the council in January of 2020, uh, the scope of work is set up in two phases with several built-in check-in points with the council. Uh, the residents at that time had asked for some additional elements to be included. And given the time that lapsed, those, those haven't yet been followed up on. But we have, um, identified, uh, where they would fit in the study and we can follow up with the, the residents and have some additional, additional discussions there. So at, at this point, um, the request essentially is to add, uh, some additional visual studies, daylight plane analysis, uh, noise and vibration analysis that came in earlier this afternoon. And those, uh, studies would all need to occur after the first council check-in. So one option before the council tonight could be to authorize the amendment, uh, as written. And then when we come back for that first check-in, uh, with the profile options for, for the grade separation alternatives, we can then return with an updated scope of work that incorporates the additional feedback that, that we've heard. Um, so if you have any other questions, we're happy to, to take those tonight. But that is, uh, one suggestion, um, for how to potentially advance, uh, the, the beginnings of the work while we can still follow up on the feedback that we're hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions on, um, the F2 on the Caltrain grade separation? Vice Mayor Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Nagaya. So, um, looking at the, uh, agreement with AECOM, AECOM. So at 7.2 is where, um, we get the six track profiles and then staff would come back to council for a check-in. Is that, and at that point, um, we can add in the additional study components?
Uh, that's correct. So the first part of task 7.2 is essentially that we'll work with AECOM, the, the technical, um, consultants here to develop, uh, six potential rail profiles. We'll return to the council and, and narrow those down to two for further study. Uh, so at that point in time, um, we would take those two options and do potential additional technical work after that point. Uh, so I think the options or the requests from the residents would be, uh, then, uh, able to be incorporated for those two profiles that are selected after that point in time.
Um, so, um, Ms. Nagaya, so I, I just want to, that I did talk to Marcio Ramo Edson Felton Gables. So I'm a little familiar with this topic. One of the requests that, um, then those residents had was in task 7.1, which is where, um, the consultant is planning on finding three examples, I believe, of the fully elevated option in the wild, I guess you can say, in, um, comparable settings, hopefully. And then they had wanted, once those are identified, to have some kind of anecdotal, anecdotal, um, analysis or dis- discussion around what those impacts may be, what that would sort of entail in Menlo Park. And then at that point, have potentially a check-in prior to 7.2. So is, what are your thoughts on that, um, ask? And then, um, yeah.
Sure. And so I think for task 7.1, the, the initial idea was that they would be identifying a couple of built examples and providing some very basic order of magnitude cost information for us. They would not be assessing impacts. And, and I don't think in this case, we'd really want our kind of technical engineering folks, really preparing anecdotal assessment of impacts on, on behalf of, of residents. And so in, in this case, this is really meant to be an illustrative example of what's possible. And then we will assess impacts, uh, specific to, to Menlo Park, um, really through the environmental phase of, of the work, which is later down the line. But we're, we're essentially front-loading a lot of those studies in, um, task 7.2 and, and forward. And so I think that's, that's likely the better place that we address those detailed impact questions, uh, more specific to, to the community here.
So when does staff, um, anticipate starting this? And when do you anticipate coming back to council for that six to two profile decision on this next step?
So very honestly, I think that will depend on some of the subsequent items on your agenda tonight. But right now we are targeting early 2023, uh, to come back with, uh, that initial kind of narrowing, narrowing down.
Um, so the, um, complete phase one, I think, was projected to last six months. So is that still tracking for that? Or would these new asks from the residents, um, prolong that? And then if you have any sense of potential cost implications of, um, these requests?
Um, so it would prolong that total six-month timeline. But I think the requests are, are fairly detailed in nature for, for, um, following up on daylight plane shadows, noise and vibration questions. In terms of costs, we haven't done a, a deep dive of, of the, um, total, um, request yet. But just as an anecdotal kind of piece of information, um, the visual simulations alone, um, in the current scope are, are shown to be about $15,000 for, for 12 simulations. What's requested is, is 32. And so that's, you know, three times roughly the, the, uh, the cost. So there, there would be a likely substantial cost implication. And we would potentially need to also look at a budget amendment, um, because we will be potentially looking, uh, at, at tracking towards the, the, the total amount of budget that we have available for this project as well.
Um, thank you. Can, can I say something? Do we need to take public comment first? Okay, so, um, I appreciate that information. I would like, is, when you come back early 2023, um, for that decision-making point of six to two, will it be possible to then have those cost implications and timing implications? And, um, while of course I'm sensitive to cost, I'm very sensitive to timing. And I just want to let, um, residents know that, um, there are some funding opportunities, both from the state and from the federal government, um, with the infrastructure dollars, um, that present opportunities that might not last long. And so, um, while I do think the due diligence in doing this study is a good thing, I am nervous about it kind of dragging on. And as one resident told me, ending up with really beautiful art renderings and no great separation. So, um, is that something in early 2023 you think you'd have so we can have more information?
Yes, that, that's the intent. So I think, um, between now and then, what we would propose is to, to meet with, uh, the Felton Gables residents and talk through, um, their proposed, um, suggestions to the scope and then return with the, um, track profiles in January, uh, early 2023, um, with, uh, the follow-up information on an additional scope amendment, if that's the direction that, that you'd like to, to see.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, well, first I, I want to say, um, thank you, Ms. Nagaya, for, um, accepting some responsibility here. I, I think I also have to accept, um, uh, most of the responsibility and that I, I was one of the members of the subcommittee and I don't think it ever met, right? Um, and so certainly, um, didn't, um, take in And so certainly didn't take into this additional components of the scope that it promised it would. So I'd like to officially extend my apologies to those residents who have engaged and follow follow this this issue closely over the years. And so just, but just by going for it, like, have you reached out? I know that the vice mayor has reached out to some of the stakeholders here. Have, did you guys reach out to them and propose this 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 fix? Are they hearing it for the first time live?
So we heard from them over the weekend, and Mr. Lounge has been in touch just over email to confirm the approach that we're suggesting tonight as well.
Okay. And just so we're totally clear, like, this engagement going forward, though, would not be the subcommittee, which the phantom subcommittee of me and Councilmember Mueller, but would be staff engaging directly with the residents.
That's correct. I think we will offer to meet with the residents of the staff. And you're, of course, welcome to join if you would like. But yeah, we will meet with them directly.
Thank you. I'd just like to make one comment about my vote coming forward, and that's Caltrain electrification is already underway. Trains will soon be coming through more frequently, creating more disruptions to traffic and delays for first responders. Four years ago, the council looked at this decision and decided to proceed with the hybrid approach. Then in January 2020, the council voted to put the brakes on that decision to look at the fully elevated model. I opposed the delay at that time. This feels like Groundhog Day. I believe we should move forward with the hybrid solution at three central intersections. Grade separations is a multi-year project, and we have already postponed the work too long. No more delays. We need to take a look and move on the federal and state funding. And Menlo Park has been prioritized grade separations already. We should move forward and go after this federal funding, the state funding. And I will be voting no to additional studies and the continued delay.
Mayor Nash, I've returned.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Would you like to comment on this? We are currently on the AEO COM, then we will go to public comment. And actually, then we will have any further discussion or questions on the consent calendar than go to public comment, just to catch you up.
So I probably should listen to public comment, or probably that's characterized my, what I was going to say. But I did hear your comments. I think the difference of position that I'm in as opposed to some of my colleagues is that I was in a meeting with Councilmember Combs when we met with, when we met with the public, and we made a representation to the public in that meeting and direction to staff. That would be, there would be additional work performed, and it hasn't been performed. And so I don't see that as delay. I see that that as work that was supposed to be done, that isn't yet. I don't see that as delaying it. I think that's just simply following through on what the direction was that wasn't accomplished. So, but I, I'm going to go ahead and let it open up to to public comment. And and we can talk about it again in the round robin.
Thank you. Is there, before we go to public comment, is there any city council discussion or questions on the consent calendar any further? Vice Mayor Willison?
Yeah, I appreciate all of my colleagues' comments on this rail study. I do think that to my earlier comment and to Mayor Nash's point, the circumstances changed a little bit since January 20, well, lots changed since January 2020, but especially with all these funding opportunities. I think in January 2023, when staff comes back with the profiles, I'm going to be looking at them very carefully. And I may very well at that time be joining Mayor Nash and being done with these extra studies. I am very eager to get going and just pick something and go. But I do feel comfortable as long as it's early 2023, like January. So and if there, if it's going to be delayed further, I'd like you to come back to council. And if we need to discuss other priorities to make that happen. I'm comfortable waiting. And if there is an opportunity for a council member to sit in on the conversations with the residents, I'm currently the LPMG rep, and I would welcome being part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for a public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on any of our consent calendar items, F1, a resolution related to city council and advisory body meetings, remote and hybrid. Item F2, an agreement with AECOM for the next phase of work for the Caltrain grade separation. F3, an agreement amendment for the project at 333 Ravenswood Avenue, Notice Park Line. Or F4, the grand, the response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury report. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine for anyone participating in public. We ask that you stand at the podium. And our first speaker will be Maria Amudson, followed by Amy Mushlin.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Maria Amundsen. I live on Lenox Avenue. And tonight, I'm representing a group of neighbors from Park Forest, Lynnfield Oaks, Felton Gables, Mills Court, the Marquee Townhomes, San Antonio Street, the Classics at Burgess, and others along the Caltrain line, rail line in town about the item F2 that's been discussed. So we have all come together with the shared goal of reducing the negative impact of trains in the homes, yards, and lives of Menlo Park residents. And with regard to tonight's consent agenda item F2, we believe that elevated trains do not belong in residential areas because of the visual noise and light disruptions these bring to people's lives. And Menlo Park, this would be particularly impactful in the more dense residential areas, both south of Ravenswood, near Lynnfield Oaks, and north of Oak Grove, where the tracks are directly adjacent or extremely close to many of our homes. Our entire group stands together with the recommendations submitted to council on behalf of the Felton Gables Neighborhood Association on January 14, 2020, with specific suggestions to various points of the AECOM proposal. And we respectfully request that you consider these in depth. In addition to the original suggestions, a fellow neighbor who is sight impaired and relies particularly heavily on hearing for safe mobility respectfully asks to add one more consideration, that is, that the study estimate peak noise and vibration as well as averages. Study models often predict averages, but this should also predict the amount of variability. We respect the amount, the number of funding opportunities ahead. But this is a really important decision that needs to be thoughtfully made if we're going to go in the direction or consider the direction of an elevated track. The impact and consequences of the city's grade separation decision will last well more than a century, and it will affect generations of Menlo Park residents to come. We urge a more thorough and careful study, particularly in the more heavily residential areas along the tracks. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public speaker will be Amy Mushlin. And Amy, if you can let us know what item you are commenting on?
Yep, I'm the same thing. I live on Mills Court, and you'll shortly hear the train, which goes through my backyard. So you guys are talking about doing 10 years of overnight construction with loud noises and and heavy machinery and bright lights in my backyard. If there was ever a case, and that's, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, I attended the public sessions, but that's what it described when I was there. And then the end result of it being freight trains going by above my house, sort of looking in. I don't know if the city is planning on putting up, what, a 60-foot cement barrier in between my house and those freight trains? But I haven't heard any plans like that. So if there's ever a case, there you go. You can probably hear it. If there's ever a case for sort of, I'm just going to let you listen to the train. Measure twice and cut once, I would think this would be it. I can't imagine that this is a situation where we want to rush into something that could, has a very high likelihood of just making a lot of things worse. Whereas just putting in a quiet zone, putting in some good quad gates, we can get a lot of the same safety benefits, you know, without, without this. So that's my, and also my other point is, it seemed like we did away with the tunnel idea with like a swipe of the pen, which is the only recommendation around grade separation that ever seemed like it could potentially make anything better. And it was some sort of like we weren't dense enough. But it does feel like we are getting 182 apartments apparently on my corner. And then there's another, I don't know how many going in over on the SRI campus. If we weren't dense enough for a tunnel before, we might be soon. Anyway, I want to keep the tunnel in scope. I want to be sure that all necessary reviews are done. And I want to be sure that, you know, if you want to do that study, I, you know, I'll volunteer my backyard, and you can come and see and think if you think this would sort of make our neighborhood more or less livable. So thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. So this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items F1 through F4. Seeing no hands or persons at the podium, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you, Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. And I wanted to thank Ms. Amundsen and Ms. Mushlin for their comments. And I wanted to clarify my earlier comment about getting this done. It wasn't to make the study, make the elevated train study worse. It was to eliminate the elevated train as an option earlier, potentially. So I just wanted to put that out there, and that there have been years and years and years and years and years of study. And the option C was a very thought-out option. And so I just wanted to clarify that if at, in January 2023, or whenever staff can bring it back, it looks like it's still a possibility to do elevated. We will obviously, I would support going forward with a very thorough analysis. But if it doesn't look feasible, then I just want to move on.
Thank you. Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the the public comments. I went out, I don't know if it was as much in response to at least one of the comments, the density that made the tunneling infeasible as much as who was going to pay for it. And that that there were lots of zeros that would, that would come after that number. I want to say I, there were, sort of thinking back to my early days on council on the rail subcommittee that doesn't exist anymore. You know, there were people and voices in the community that said that we had never fully looked at elevated and that it was going to be the most, you know, economical and and provide the the least amount of sort of disruption in relation to crosstown traffic during construction. And so I think that that's how we, at least from the part of which I have some knowledge of, started on on this journey. But I will say that I am in in total agreement on this with the mayor and vice mayor. I do think it's time to to move on. And so very interested in what staff comes back. But but then I do say, let's, let's just make a decision, and we have made a decision. So and maybe we'll remake that decision. But I certainly am, again, after, you know, the the three years have aged me on council. And I'm more willing to say to those, those people who saw these sort of Roman aqueducts and said that, you know, that that, okay, show it to me. If it doesn't exist, then then let's 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 move on with the direction we were headed in.
Thank you. So I would like to separate out F1, F1, F3, and F4 from F2. Would anyone like to make a motion or?
Yeah, I'll move all items except for F2.
Sounds good. I will second the motion to get us moving. City Council, I'm sorry, City Clerk Karen, would you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Willison and a second by Mayor Nash to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item F2. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller? City Councilmember Mueller wasn't able to capture your vote. City Councilmember Mueller? Okay, City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
Yes.
And the motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller absent.
I will go ahead and move F2. Is there a second?
Can I ask that, Ms. Nagaya, is there any rewording of F2, given your update?
So I don't think there's any rewording to the motion, but we can acknowledge in the minutes the direction to follow up, much like in 2020 on this additional scope element items.
Councilmember Combs?
You said you were going to move this item? I thought you were going to vote against it. Or are you?
I make the motion. Thank you.
You are going to make the motion?
Feel free.
Okay, no, I.
I'm going to vote against it, but I, anyone can make the motion. I was just trying to move the meeting along.
Okay, no, okay, totally right. Because I thought you had made the motion. And so then, but I heard you say that you were going to vote against it.
I was making the motion, and then I was planning to vote against it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that, I didn't know you could do that. I don't.
Can we do that? Good question.
You can, anyone can move in second. They do not need to be in favor.
Okay.
Well, I know you don't need to second to be in favor.
Because, yeah, you could change your mind between making the.
Actually, just to make it clear, would you like to make the, I will back mine out just to, so we don't have any complications.
I will move.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for, state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs, a second by Vice Mayor Willison to prove an amendment to AECOM's existing agreement for the Caltrain grade separation project. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs?
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller?
I'm back. I'm sorry, I had technical difficulties. But yeah, my my vote on this is yes. And again, it's just for the study work. Doesn't, this does not in any way show what my vote will be in future once it's done.
Thank you, City Councilmember Mueller. City Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison?
Yes.
Mayor Nash?
No.
And the motion passes with Mayor Nash dissenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. The first regular business item is G1, Adopt a Resolution Authorizing Installation of No Parking Zones on Both Sides of Middle Avenue, Installation of an Always Stop on Middle Avenue and San Mateo Drive, Replacement of an Always Stop at Middle Avenue and University Drive with a Roundabout with Yield Control, and Temporary Closure of Blake Street at Middle Avenue. To introduce the item is Assistant Public Works Director Hugh Lounge.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. Appreciate the opportunity. Let me just get my presentation up here for you. Okay. Again, thank you, Mayor Nash, Vice Mayor Willison, and members of council here to talk to you again about the Middle Avenue Complete Streets project. And of course, we've been here a couple of times to review various elements of this project. See, so what I wanted to do tonight is just do a little quick reminder here about the goals of the project. Talk about the direction we received on September 13th, when we brought forward an item to discuss all that we had heard from public outreach and from Complete Streets Commission and other sort of public input to talk about sort of dimensions of the pilot that was requested and then and where our next steps are. And I don't have a slide specific to it, but I do just want to make sure there's acknowledgement. You know, there was a significant amount of outreach that's gone into this today. So we're not going to talk about all the things we've talked about at past times, but do you want to kind of make a note of that upfront? So we're not going to talk about all the things we've talked about at past times, but um do you want to kind of make a note of that upfront? Um, so just to remind everybody uh what the goals were that we were given as we started this project. Uh, and and this came out of the council priority setting session a couple of years ago. So enhancing bicycle and pedestrian visibility and improving safety for all users is kind of chief goal. Um, also providing a safe and comfortable cycling and pedestrian infrastructure uh and encouraging sustainable modes of transportation. Um, and then increasing access uh along the corridor as the middle plaza development starts to open and provide and and then especially as the grade separated uh pedestrian and bicycle crossing of the Caltrain tracks and that location opens. So tho- those are really shape all the things in the work that we did um on uh this project. Um, so then to summarize at a very high level, um, and then I've got some images that show this as well. These are the things that we heard uh on the thirteenth. Um, and there are a number of different items here, quite a lot of items. Uh, and some of them we're going to talk about tonight, some of them were not. So the first item on here is reducing the speed limit, and that's something that we heard from you both on uh Middle Avenue where it's thirty miles an hour and then on a number of other streets that are sort of similar in character. So that's something that staff are working on currently. Um, there are complexities in the way the vehicle code uh works and and authorizations and what uh you all might have to do, uh which likely will involve an ordinance uh to be updated or adopted um as part of this. So that's going to take a little bit more time and effort to kind of sort out the details of. So that's not on the agenda tonight, and and as I say, just it requires some more time. Um, the second thing was uh installation of traffic calming at regular intervals, and we will, I'll show those again uh here in a minute. Um, and I think we had very clear direction from you. We had very clear support, I would say, across all the outreach we did on that item. So that's not really something that we're looking for approval, that's you've sort of provided that approval previously. Um, we did pursue a grant that will help fund some of that work. Um, and that's something that we would uh install as that grant uh became available. Um, and then a couple of items that essentially uh related to parking. Um, and so we had brought forward on the thirteenth uh mostly a parking removal entirely on one side and then some parts of the other side. Um, and the direction we received on the thirteenth was to pilot removing parking from both sides uh and and doing sort of wider buffers and wider bicycle lanes um as it's, as it relates to that. Um, and then something that's been kind of consistent throughout is uh at Nealon Park, sort of reconfiguring the parking um and the bike ways so that it's possible to uh have a little bit of a safer interaction between people uh parking there and and the bicyclists who would, who are and will be using that. Um, and also to explore uh potentially converting some of that parking into loading zones, given the amount of uh sort of pickup and drop off that might be happening at the park. Um, then a few other items more related uh to traffic control. So we heard from you about uh, or we heard direction to pursue an always stop sign at San Mateo Drive and Middle. Uh, we had a lot of conversation around piloting a mini roundabout and recognizing that that's a new treatment. Um, and I think there was support for that, uh but recognizing that that is it's probably its own pilot and also a little bit on its own schedule. And we'll talk more about that a little bit later. Um, and then some other uh kinds of intersection related changes uh around the Shell gas station driveway, which is something you authorized us to explore um and and is on our uh sort of docket to do. Uh, uh, temporary closure of Blake Street, which was something that was initiated by residents uh of Blake Street uh and nearby residents who supported it. We've heard a lot of support and public outreach for that as well. Um, and and then finally to add a CIP project to complete the sidewalk on the south side of Middle. So that's a lot of different items that we heard about. Um, and some of those, as I mentioned, move forward, uh could move forward tonight with the resolutions that are in front of you um or or could go in a different direction um as you uh as you proceed with this. So just to quickly share with you some of the kind of visuals that relate uh what was um what was provided on the thirteenth. Uh, so you can see the the red markings show the removal of parking uh on both sides. You can see at Blake Street, uh, there's an existing uh recently installed uh rectangular rapid flashing beacon there. Uh, so pedestrian uh lighted crosswalk, sometimes people will call it, but uh, and then we're also proposing a raised crossing um at that location, given the number of pedestrians traveling there and trying to get access to the park. Uh, you can see the mini roundabout near university. Um, and and one thing to acknowledge here is that another item of this project that's been kind of consistent throughout is a need to look in more detail um at El Camino Real. Um, and that is something that staff uh again are continuing to work on because it's Caltrans-owned uh and because that needs to go through a little bit more design uh and and clear, uh, you know, so some processes uh to bring that back. We we will uh be looking at that still, um, and we will be bringing that back at some future point. And the main items there that were discussed were really various signal changes uh, including potentially no right turn on red, uh bicycle, uh bicycle signal potentially, especially as the new undercrossing opens and things like that. So that's something that we are working on and we will be bringing back um in the future. So moving further down the road uh between university and San Mateo, uh you can see uh another raised crosswalk near Lyle Park. Uh, you know, speed feedback signs on a couple of these segments. Uh, and then the new proposed uh stop sign at San Mateo. Um, and then uh from San Mateo down to Olive, again, another raised uh crossing uh crosswalk at Cotton. Uh, and then somewhere between Cotton and and San Mateo, a speed hump or a speed table. Um, uh, and then off to the right here, you see again the same stop sign. So those are the generally speaking, the treatments, and as you see throughout in this uh visualization, and I should have said this at the first of these, but again, the whole thing has been compressed uh so that uh, you know, the length of the street is much uh more tight than than the width of the street. Um, and and that's really just to help get it all on a small number of pages uh for your review. Uh, but you can see the kind of bike lanes and buffers and then vehicle lanes in the center of the street, uh which is what the design would show for implementing uh that pilot. Um, so we have received a lot of feedback throughout this project and again, uh since uh the thirteenth, um, and including a tremendous amount today, um, and we are reading through that and processing it as it comes in. We really appreciate, of course, all the feedback that we're getting. We we have also been having conversations with a number of folks, including some of the, you know, more institutional property owners um in that area. Um, and I did want to acknowledge uh and talk a little bit about some of the parking uh considerations that we've heard about. Um, and some of the work that we have been doing as we go to make sure we understand what those issues are um and are addressing them appropriately. So um, one question that's come up a number of times is the amount of parking near the new community church, uh, which is, you know, just uh adjacent there to Lyle Park um and and the Rosner House. And, you know, what we found, so we've done one observation so far, so keep in mind, this is one observation, and of course, it'll vary. Um, and and we would be doing more uh as we'll talk about in a minute. Um, and what we found generally is about fifty-one uh vehicles parked, if you say roughly, between Fremont uh and Windsor um in that stretch, so um, that's uh, you know, a a fair number of vehicles. So all those vehicles would need to park elsewhere um if they were coming to the church on a, on a typical Sunday. Um, and that's, you know, somewhat less than half, maybe it's about a third of the parking spaces in that stretch that I described that were in use uh at that time. Um, but still, I think the key number is that that's, that's how much would be displaced. Um, another issue that's come up is the uh overnight parking permits on Middle Avenue. So right now, there are five outstanding parking permits uh that are are used. So those are are folks that wouldn't be able to park on Middle, obviously, if there was no parking. Uh, but those permits uh would allow them to park elsewhere, uh but but not a tremendous number in use right now. Um, and then throughout the project, there's been a lot of questions about the parking around uh Nealon Park. Um, and so going back to the beginning, uh while the um sidewalk was being constructed in front of Nealon Park recently and the same project where we installed the flashing beacon, uh, we did do parking occupancy studies. Those were reported back uh to you and to the Complete Streets Commission at a prior meetings. And and we did not find any capacity issues at that time uh from that parking being closed. And so that gave us a little bit more confidence to potentially convert that parking. And that's what, part of the reason why um that is in um uh the uh resolution uh and, or, yeah, in the, in the sort of design that's proposed. Uh, we have heard recently and certainly were a number of emails today and yesterday about um the concerns about potential impacts on seniors uh using Little House. Uh, and that's certainly something that we, you know, take very seriously and want to make sure would be appropriately um addressed. Um, and I think uh there are a couple of different uh things that we think that we could do uh to make sure that that could happen. So right now, there are assigned parking restrictions um for by time of day for the use of the back part of Nealon Park. Um, the enforceability of that is something that um needs a little bit of work. Uh, and that's another piece of work that staff could potentially do to sort of better control and manage that parking. Uh, we know a lot of that parking is used by residents of parallel streets, not so much Middle Avenue, but other streets. Um, and that those, you know, it's tough to sort of restrict that use uh currently. Uh, but that's certainly something that could be looked into um a- and potentially um brought forward uh as part of um the pilot or or future action uh by council that, so those are the kinds of things that we can do. Um, we could also look at it, you know, to the extent that there are specific concerns about parts of the park where safety would be an issue. You know, there are potential redesigns of the parking lot or uh even, you know, within parking lot traffic calming uh that we could look at doing to make sure that um that all felt safe uh and comfortable. Or again, if there was sort of pickup and drop off right in front of uh the Little House that needed to be improved. There, there are a number of things that we could do, and that's certainly something that we can look into in more detail. Um, and you know, if and when we move forward. Um, and then uh, you know, regarding overall capacity, w- we have identified that some restriping of the parking lot would allow more parking within that lot. And so we can recapture some of the spaces that would be lost by the conversion um of the parking uh that uh would be in the front of it. And uh then this just acknowledges the uh parallel parking um as well. Um, and then the last thing I'll say is that uh sort of general concerns about parking in the corridor. You know, our experience being out there generally is that it is not heavily parked today, the occasional vehicles. Um, and we, so what we did was we looked back through Google Street View, and we found that over four different observations since twenty nineteen, you know, somewhere around ten percent of vehicles of like total parking area, if you will. I mean, it's a, it's a rough estimate, um, to be fair, uh, is in use um at any time um during uh that um corridor. Um, before I go forward, I'm going to go backwards, and I apologize for this because there, I know there have also been questions about the stop sign um at San Mateo and why that uh arrived in the recommendations and and just to maybe clarify uh some of that. So um at San Mateo, the logic uh there is that you have quite a bit of uh bicycle um and pedestrian uh traffic that both uh crossing uh at that location, but also turning uh onto uh San Mateo to access that bike bridge that gets you to Stanford. Um, and so the stop sign originally, a number of years prior, uh, there was a a concept to add the flashing beacon there. Um, you know, certainly if if council directed us to, we could return uh to that. Uh, but uh the, we we feel like for bicyclists using and getting their a stop sign is going to be a little bit better uh as an opportunity than a flashy beacon. Um, and and I know there've been some questions about the sort of roundabout at university versus the stop sign at San Mateo. Uh, and you know, part of the thinking there, and if you've been out there, you'll know that San Mateo is quite skewed as an intersection. Um, and so staff don't think that a roundabout would actually be functional in that location. Um, it'd be very hard to design one where you get the appropriate kind of deflection that you need uh to make that a a good investment. So that's part of the reason why that's not um a suggestion for that location. So going back uh forward again, uh, want to talk a little bit about what it means uh to pilot the improvements uh that that were discussed uh on the thirteenth. So we've been doing quite a bit of thinking about what that looks like. Uh, there's quite a bit of material in the staff report itself, and we're happy to discuss that further. Uh, we recognize there's a little bit more work to do to specify uh some of this, but uh, you know, it's sort of a high level thinking about piloting. So uh, one of the main things is that we're going to use, we would use temporary material. So mostly that means paint instead of uh thermoplastic, uh which is, you have to grind up off the pavement and and so therefore a little bit more difficult uh to make that um to make that work or or it has a little bit of impact on the road itself. Um, would be a lot of data collection. Um, we would already be collecting data this fall, uh, and I'll show a schedule in a minute. Uh, and then we would also collect information during the pilot, and that includes traffic volumes, also people, number of people biking and walking. We'd be looking at speeds, we'd be looking at um uh parking on some of the side streets in particular uh during the pilot, but also, you know, on the uh middle beforehand. And then, of course, collision data that we, our police department regularly collects for us. So all that stuff that we would collect before and during, um, then we'd be investigating that in thorough detail and reporting it back. Um, it also means incorporating outreach into the pro, into the uh project. And of course, you know, anytime we would make a change, we'd always be available and uh would do any outreach, even if it was a permanent change that appeared necessary. But, you know, we would plan to uh do a number of meetings during the pilot itself uh just to make sure that we were checking with folks. Uh, we also talk about sort of down here below, having a public survey that's opened the duration of the pilot. So that's a real opportunity for people to participate in multiple ways. Um, uh, and then just in terms of those feedback and notification methods, I did want to um uh mention that, you know, we had a lot of conversation about how we notify people, and that was a big subject of the conversation on the thirteenth. Um, and what we are thinking probably works best is to use door hangers. So we would have something where we were letting folks know that uh parking removal would be coming, uh assuming it was authorized. Um, and that would be an opportunity for us to spend some time talking to people on the corridor, uh, but also for anyone who wasn't there, getting a real clear notification of what was coming and contact information. Because uh anytime we do a project that changes, uh the conditions of the street, we certainly do make time for folks uh to answer individual questions. Um, I already mentioned outreach and and the survey. Um, and then just to kind of give you a sense about what the sort of scope and extent of the parking, uh, or sorry, not the parking, but all the data collection might be. Um, so we do collect essentially on a biannual basis, um, and sometimes more frequently uh traffic counts uh that include uh, you know, a variety of of different types of counts. We do counts that are show speeds and we do counts that uh can collect um uh just volumes. We also do intersection counts where we have a little bit more data, but in a a shorter period of time. So those are the circles. So in the, in the yellow-ish colored ones or greenish colored ones are, those are ones that we generally already would be doing uh and will be doing those actually soon. Uh, so people will start to see those counting equipment out. Um, anyway, we would be adding a number of other uh counts to that and and other data collection opportunities. And then also the kind of blue colored lines are where we were thinking about uh looking in more detail at at some of the parking um issues. Um, and and one thing I want to make clear is that we're not going to go out and collect actual sort of where you lay the tubes out across the road. Um, on every street, uh, we do have access to this uh data service through the um uh through the county called Streetlight, uh, which enables us to do estimates of uh traffic volumes. Also, I can pet volumes and speeds and other things. And um, the key with this is that it's, it doesn't necessarily give you a hundred percent accurate count, but it's good for understanding change. Um, so that would be really useful, um, because to do all of this counting would sort of be beyond uh the resources um of the city, given that we need to do citywide counts. Um, so that's a way to sort of extend that, and we can also kind of calibrate those by looking at the streetlight data in some of the same locations where we do um counts. Um, so then just quickly to walk you through the schedule that's proposed, uh, i- if we move forward with this. So um, here we are sort of on the far left, uh, started having this conversation. Uh, the next step for us would be to really start the pilot design, uh, bring that forward to the Complete Streets Commission. Um, I think we also mentioned doing an informational item for council. Um, then, uh, you know, once there was sort of acceptance of that, that would turn into sort of the parking removal notifications, which would go first, uh, and then the pilot of the parking removal and the bike way. Um, so those are those elements. And as part of that, we would be collecting data. So we, as I mentioned, that data collection will actually start now. Uh, a- and then uh would happen again at sort of the roughly same time of year. Um, and then while the pilot is up and running. Um, and and the thinking on the schedule for the pilot itself is really that if we're going to do a pilot, the ideal time to start it is in summer, both because, you know, volumes are a little bit less, you know, people are out of town. Uh, kind of gets us ready to sort of work out any kinks before uh school starts and things like that. Um, and then I mentioned the public survey and the and the outreach meetings we'd be doing as part of that. Um, and then in terms of implementation items, uh, so a couple of the items don't, aren't really um, I technically, we're piloting all of these things, but uh they're different sort of pilots, there's pilots and pilots, I guess. Uh, and so something like a stop sign is quite easy to install, and if there were issues, quite easy to remove uh again. So, um, and then the Blake Street closure, which uh we've essentially heard, um, you know, support for, as I mentioned, throughout the process uh would also take place um essentially as quickly as we can. And those two items uh might be done together, they might be done apart. It really depends more on the way um the kind of crews who do our signage and striping program work. Um, so they might, they might actually be a little bit separate in time, but in the same general timeframe um i- is the thinking. Um, and then uh, if we get the funding from the grant we applied for, the. Um, and then uh, if we get the funding from the grant we applied for, the traffic calming uh could start to be installed as soon as the pilot happens. But uh, we would also want to kind of coordinate that with other activities as well. So that's a little bit TBD, but we would figure that out um later. Um, and then just one other thing uh uh to mention uh that's important is that there were a lot of comments. And we are certainly aware as staff that there are um areas of pavement uh degradation um and that need to be addressed. Uh, some of those can be addressed sort of in the short term with some repairs. Um, and then there is a need eventually to repave, as there are for many streets. Um, as part of that, uh, you know, we would try to do some coordination between the repaving and some of the implementation. And it's not the whole street, it's just, it's part of the street that's uh particularly um has pavement issues. So in in particular for that part of the street, we would try to coordinate um and to the extent possible, address some of the drainage issues um at Kenwood and Morey. Uh, that have been addressed uh raised by folks and that that staff are certainly um aware of. So uh, with all that said, uh, the resolution that's in the packet tonight uh really sort of uh formalizes. Uh, the direction we got on the thirteenth. Um, but given the sort of amount of communication we've had and and uh understanding that there's a lot of. Uh, you know, this is a big change for for folks. Um, you know, we sort of see a kind of a menu of options. Uh, so one option would be to approve that resolution and and move forward as laid out in the schedule. Um, you know, another option would be to to sort of move back more towards what was proposed on uh the thirteenth. Um, and and look at it mostly uh as a bike way on one side, and that could also be piloted um uh or um or it could be permanent. Um, and then uh, you know, uh, another option, I guess, a third option that uh Chris's staff is to really focus on the items where we know there's a lot of support. Like the Blake Street closure and the stop sign, and they move forward with those items now. Uh, and then if more discussion is needed on the parking items, uh, those would come back at a future time. Um, and with that, I have uh other things to share if needed, um, but I'm happy to take questions.
City Manager Murphy.
And thank you, thank you, Mr. Louch, and and thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to just um add on just a a little bit more before turning it over to the city council. So um, uh, a- as was outlined, the important thing is that the council does have options. And so what's uh in front of the council this evening is the opportunity to take an action, and there's multiple actions. Those are all contained in a single uh resolution, but those can be uh carved out. So it'd be uh a sug- suggestion from staff would be if the council would indeed like to pursue some action this evening. But not necessarily all actions, that that get identified pretty early in the the council's deliberations. Because then staff can work to um revise the, any resolutions as necessary. We may even ask to take a a short break, because if there is um uh any sort of action the council takes tonight. That's not exactly the uh resolution in front of you, we'd like the opportunity to present that uh on the screen. So if, for example, the council opted to approve um the Blake closure and only the Blake closure this evening. We would like the opportunity to amend that resolution, get that on the screen, so there's um. A common understanding of that, and uh we can kind of go from there. So that's kind of a key sort of uh procedural aspect, um, when the council starts on its deliberations after um after uh public comment. So the one other thing in terms of the, the, the topic that generates the, the greatest amount of interest that we've received uh since the um September thirteenth meeting. Uh, it is indeed related to the, to the parking, so that is something that may warrant some additional uh time and additional notification. To make sure everybody's fully aware of um what's involved with that prior to the council taking action on the resolution. As as Mr. Louch identified, there'd be plenty of um notification prior to um any sort of parking restrictions going into place. So this, this clarification is specific to notification about what the council may be acting on. So uh, we do see that there may be some um uh benefits to the, to the community for some additional time. For notifications specific to the topic of parking restrictions. So with that, happy uh to field uh questions um either at this point or after the. After the public comment period.
Thank you very much. Before we um move on, I actually um, I'd like to suggest. To suggest narrowing this agenda item. I propose that tonight we only review the items that were part of the September thirteenth meeting, which were strongly supported. And hold on any decisions and discussion and decisions about the parking and parking removal until a later date. I'm proposing this because strong notification to the public, especially middle avenue residents, is critical for the success. Of this important project, and the public notice of the detailed pilot project did not go out on time, unfortunately. And in talking with people this weekend, people were unaware, many people were unaware of this meeting. And so I think that we should defer the parking-related issues at this time. So I would like to poll the council to see whether um we. There is uh agreement to um go ahead with the discussion of the temporary closure at Blake Street. And the always stop at San Mateo Drive, and for the other items, we wait and discuss um the pilot design at a later date. With additional notification. Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you. Um, and City Manager Murphy, I believe this might be for you. Um, so Stanford, as part of their um conditions of approval for the Middle Plaza, is paying for and has to get the work done. Um, on that El Camino to University stretch. Um, so delaying any decision, how does that impact um that?
So I can handle that one in conversation with them. So depending on the timing uh of actually coming back on something, if it were deferred, i- it's probable that they would just end up paying. Uh, giving funding to the city, I mean, that we would be responsible for implementing. More?
Yes, a little bit more would be great. Obviously, um, it is always, it, it just for the public, we always prefer to have the.
Sure.
Developer do the construction.
Yeah, we, we certainly do. Um, a- and and in every case where we can, um, you know, once we kind of get to the point where they're, you know. Opening, which is, we're closing in on very quickly. Um, at some point, um, we, you know. We sort of pass the point where we can kind of continue to ask them to to do the um uh, to do the work for us. Um, so it it really depends on when this can come back, and then as Ms. Nagaya mentioned, I think in the prior item, given the number of other things that. That need to come back, that that could actually be some time from now. So um, then, you know, i- it just, it's hard to commit right now that they would definitely still be in a position where they would be uh doing the construction.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wilson.
Can you elaborate on, it would be a while before this could come back.
Sure, um, I have a list of things. So there are quite a few things coming up, um, one of which was what we just discussed a minute ago. Which is the great separation effort, which we imagine, you know, um, and as you've requested, I think, having a meeting very early next year. Um, to do that, that's obviously uh some work, and then uh that meeting, that first meeting, maybe to say a word about that is, is really. That's the easy meeting, uh, right? And then there's a second meeting that follows on from that, where we actually have done some work on some real profiles. Like we've made them from sort of this abstract idea into something more concrete. Uh, and when I say concrete, I don't mean built. Uh, so they, uh, so that would be another meeting for that. Um, there's outreach for the quiet zone that's coming up. There's the Coleman Ringwood study, which is going to have active outreach in this uh, in this timeframe. There's a sort of number of outstanding grants, obviously, for this project, but also the other project we put in for. As well as uh the Will Road ATP, which um, uh, everybody cross your fingers, because I'm hoping we'll hear later this week. Uh, or next week on that uh grant opportunity, that we're getting very close to the schedule uh for that. And and then there are um other uh sort of items beyond that, but just to sort of give you a sense of that. And then plus, you know, sort of staff sort of baseline uh underlying responsibility. So uh, given that, given council calendar, which um uh either Public Works Director or City Manager can speak to how, what, what's on the calendar coming up. Uh, you know, it would be at least into next year, I think, before this would um, this would be able to come back.
And that would be even if we use the same staff report or if. Similar?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Wilson, Mayor Nash. So I think the, the primary consideration, I think, is the request for additional outreach notifications prior to the item coming back. And Mr. Louch said that the, the main concern that we have, I think, is uh the stacking up of of the next few meetings and the agendas um being planned out. So we have essentially three council meetings um for which business can be conducted between now and the end of the calendar year. And then the, the council's kind of typical reorganization meeting um in in later December. And then we're into to January. So those next three meetings are uh quite, quite programmed already um with some items uh planned to come back. So that's what we're thinking, uh, January is really the soonest that this can come back before you.
I will just state that um the notification, I was looking for more notification because the email list, I don't believe, was um. The information about this meeting was not sent out to the email list and was not posted until very recently, and so people did not have an opportunity. I'm not expecting necessarily to um more outreach prior to it coming back, just notification. Councilmember Mueller.
Mayor Nash.
Did you want to say anything that you had?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do, I would. So this is actually the item that I, during uh the beginning of the meeting. When we were talking about the agenda, it's actually along the same vein of what I was going to be raising then. I actually do support the bifurcation um that was suggested by this uh, the city manager and that you've brought up. And I actually do want outreach to take place beyond just the notification. I was surprised to have received emails from Peninsula volunteers and others. Uh, as uh to see this come in, uh, and for them to say they, there had, they had not truly been engaged in this process yet. And I think the bifurcation is wise, as I mentioned at the last meeting. You, moving forward with anything too quickly before this is fully cooked, could have, could just completely derail. Any pilot the city moves forward with. You have to move forward with the community on things like this. Uh, and that involves a lot of outreach at the beginning. So I, I support the bifurcation. I would, tonight, I just would like to talk about the stop sign. In Blake Street, and then we can uh take this up after the appropriate amount of outreach is, has, has taken place uh with the community. So they feel like they've been a part of the process.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm supportive of, of uh removing the um, the issue of parking removal from consideration tonight. But, but I do have to pause to make the point that when we brought up this issue last month. What I exactly said was in this situation, you essentially needed to go door to door, engage all of the neighbors. And I have to, a- and and I think that it was, it was disappointing that council made the decision to bring this back without doing that. And and what was in the staff report was this idea that after you had made the decision to remove the parking, then you would go and engage the neighbors. That makes it a farce. Really? I mean, you've made the decision to remove the parking in front of people's house, substantially changing the way they live their lives. And now you're going to do this outreach and say, oh, here it comes, here it comes, it's happening. And so when I said last month that you had to go door to door, it's because I saw this situation happening. And I've had people frantic, calling me on emails, because they had no idea that all of a sudden. That the parking in front of their house was on the table to be removed. This was all predictable. And and there is a loss of trust for, for dozens of people in the community, if not hundreds, with this council at this moment. And it could have been avoided. We have never in the situation of the city for a whole street, for as long as Meadow. Completely just removed all of the parking. We did not do it on Oak Grove, on Oak Grove, we've removed parking on certain sides. And in that situation, if you look at the, the, the resident at the condo complex on the corner of, of Oak Road and Pine. Actually came and to the council, at that time, I was not on this council, and said, hey, we have legitimate concerns about parking being removed. From in front of our complex. And at that point, the council looked at it and and made a decision to actually create a carving into the. In into the, the sidewalk, because there was enough room. I mean, i- i- it just, even if you look at Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz, we, we removed the parking. But those residents had a decision, as you said, Mayor Nash, that the city said they, that you could keep the parking. But then the city would have to use the maximum amount of its right of way, which is into where people have their landscaping, into where people have put fences. And they decided on Santa Cruz, you know what, I like my landscaping, I like my fence that's in the city right of way, so I'd rather forego the parking. And so they had a choice. We have never given the residents of Meadow any choice. And all of the, the emails that we have gotten about this issue proves this point. So yeah, we can remove it from, from, from the, 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 the agenda tonight, but this was completely predictable, completely predictable.
Let's move on to public comment, and then we can respond to um comments. Thank you. Um, City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, for any member of the public wishes to comment on item G one. Adoption of a resolution related to Middle Avenue, San Mateo Drive, um, and University Drive and Blake Street. Please engage that hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cell phone, please press star nine. If you're participating in chambers, you may step up to the podium. And our first speaker will be Neil, followed by Bill Kirsch. And Neil, if you wouldn't mind stating your last name for the record.
It's Wolf.
Thank you, go right ahead.
Hi, I live on Middle and um my cross street is Blake, and I just want to stress the disparity of how. Um, the residences on Blake have been treated compared to us. I, for one, live three house, three houses up from Blake and never even knew that it was up for discussion, that they were going to block off the street. Um, no one on Middle was informed. This fully blocks us off from Allied Arts, our neighborhood. No other option was discussed, such as a raised sidewalk or something that would slow traffic down, but also give us access to our neighborhood. Um, and in the time from the prior meeting, you've given Blake per- permit parking, and on the whole parallel street. Uh, Middle has parallel parking or permit parking. So at the same time that the city's been attempting to take our parking away, they've given. Much more parking to the rest of the neighborhood and essentially attempted to block us off from our neighborhood. Um, and then in uh my comments to the, or opinion of your plan. Is that it doesn't seem to take into consideration of any ADA um. Needs. Uh, I, for one, um, push my daughter in a stroller down Middle every single day. And it is a struggle to even get that to downtown, to Neeland Park or um. Just do the like neighborhood without having to go into the dirt, into the road. Uh, the current sidewalk situation is horrible, and that, just the thought that you guys would try and take parking away. Before you would complete sidewalks um to cause us to jaywalk, park, you know. What seems to up to like a mile away for our guests to then walk to our house with incomplete sidewalks is. Um, absurd. And then uh, a few weeks ago, I went to talk to Little House to see what they knew about the parking situation. And they told me I was the first person to bring it up to them, and they had no clue. And um, just today, I spoke with the manager of one of the larger apartment complexes on Middle. And he had never even heard of this meeting or any attempt to remove parking. So I just feel like there's been. So I just feel like there's been so little effort put into notifying and working with those who actually live on Middle and that are going to be impacted with this project. It's really made us lose trust in the city. Yeah. And then how you guys went over backwards for Blake Street. It's left a bad taste in our mouth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Bill Kirsch, followed by an in-person speaker, Sean Vandero.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go right ahead.
City Council, folks, thank you so much for your service. I know this is a, a difficult topic, but I kind of bristle that, at, at the notion that it's the only constituents for parking removal are those that live on Middle. How about talking then to every parent that has a child that rides their bicycle to Oakno School or to, to Hillview School? So it's, the, the street is not owned by the folks that live on that street. The staff did a great job in surveying every parking space, I think of all the residents on Middle, and found that they all had at least three or four parking spots. So, and I, I bicycle and I drive on this street. I get tailgated whenever I try to drive the speed limit. When I bicycle, there's really very little demand for parking on the street. So I'd be really disappointed if this council does not move forward now with a pilot. This is just a pilot. Yes, I'm sure there'll be reaction, but I think over time, the whole community is going to benefit from this. I think what we're trying to do is move ourselves, you know, out of the 20th century to get into the 21st century. You know, we've got climate change. We have a climate action plan, but to me, it has no credibility unless we're taking bold steps to make our streets safer for walking and bicycling. So again, this is just a pilot. We can move forward with the pilot. And if you're going to poll people, if you're going to talk to all the neighbors, then you ought to talk to all the folks that have kids or adults that use this, this corridor on their bicycles or they walk. They're all constituents. It's not just the people that live there. So I'd, I'd love to see you guys make bold action now and not defer this thing because we have an opportunity to move the city forward. If we get this undercrossing built, we're going to have a fabulous corridor to get some people out of their car, make it easy for the southern part of town to access the whole Burgess complex for all the folks that live on, on the east side of El Camino to get over to this side of town and all the shopping that's available. So I ask you to do the right thing tonight. Don't delay this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Sean Vandero, followed by Brendan Visser.
Hello. I already spoke, but this is also pertinent because I live very close and I use Middle Avenue quite a bit, both for driving, biking, and walking. I have a few points that I wrote down. There are no particular order. I, I actually don't feel like parking removal is a huge deal right now. It doesn't seem like something that needs to happen very rapidly. I think as soon as that underpass is finished, then the demand to use Middle Avenue between like University and El Camino is going to dramatically increase. But my strategy is always to like go into Allied Arts and go up. That seems like the much safer way. So it doesn't, I think I would be upset if I was someone who was, you know, at risk of losing their parking and it doesn't feel like a super pressing matter. So that was one point. The stop sign at San Mateo for bicyclists seems like a great idea. I just wanted to make that very minor note that a crosswalk on the north side of San Mateo would be wonderful. It's very awkward. I know I'm very in the weeds, but it's very awkward to cross the street, then cross San Mateo, then cross, excuse me, cross the street, cross Middle, then cross San Mateo to, to be on your way. And if you had a crosswalk on the right side, that would make the whole experience much better. And it is a super busy corridor for bicyclists and for walkers. We walk it all the time. Another note, making Middle Avenue feel narrower seems like a more enjoyable experience for drivers and pedestrians and cyclists. I think that naturally makes people drive slower. It's one of the reasons we decided to move to Menlo Park. All the streets are now, and it feels more neighbor, neighborly and people drive slower as a result. I think there's like a visual cue that if you could somehow, and parking can actually accomplish this. It makes the road feel narrower and slows people down. And, and I was going to say in a previous community that I've lived in, they actually made parking the buffer and they had a bike lane between parallel parking and the curb, which was really interesting and seemingly effective. You felt protected as a cyclist, but it also made the street feel narrower and slowed down traffic. Hopefully this wasn't too in the weeds. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Brendan Visser, followed by Robert Lencioni.
Hi, Brendan and Carmen Visser here. We've lived on Middle Avenue for 13 years. We are, so we live on Middle at San Mateo. We have school-aged children who go to Oakno and Hillview on bicycles, and it is not a safe street. It is labeled as the safe route for bicycles, and it is clearly not safe. We know that from recent accidents. We all know that anybody who's gone up or down that street at a time that children are riding bikes, it's quite clear. I, I bristle a little bit at this whole idea that there was not any community outreach because in fact, to be honest, I had not really been politically engaged in Menlo Park before this issue, but there was a lot of outreach. So the fact that after then, the city council initially had the courage to say that they were going to prioritize safety, that folks have come out and, and that this, this small but vocal minority has caused the city council to backtrack here is quite upsetting. I want to really second what Bill Kirsch says, though I am a resident of Middle and I would lose parking in front of my own house, that in fact, I think we have to prioritize the, the, what is best for the whole neighborhood. And that clearly includes all of those folks who are on bicycles in what we, we sort of, in a silly terminology, call our bike safety corridor. Right now, this small number of cars that are parked on Middle during the daytime, the ones at San Mateo for about two blocks in either direction are mostly Stanford employees who actually, because it's expensive to park on campus, park on the side, get out of their bike, get their bike out of their trunk and run over to Stanford campus. So there's a relatively small number of cars actually parked during the day on, on Middle. But for every single car parked, those children have to veer out into the street and it creates a safety problem. This has been discussed for quite a long time. So it's not really accurate to sort of imply that there had not been an opportunity for community engagement. And to be honest, Counselor Combs, I told you so comment where he acted like there really had been, this is a terrible surprise, and then this small vocal minority wasn't ever being listened to. It does injustice to the efforts that this, the city councillors for this neighborhood had made to reach out to residents with multiple opportunities before that, this last couple of weeks of outcry to, to, to comment. And then all of a sudden backtrack is super disappointing. And I would really encourage the city council to do the right thing, which is prioritize safety. Understand the traffic demands on this street are going to increase dramatically when that construction opens. And that setting back this clock, because everybody's having a little panic attack over this small but vocal minority that is upset about losing parking is really taking us backwards, despite the fact that this has been many, many months, not years, incoming.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Robert Lencioni, followed by Jerry Jones.
Good evening. I'm Robert Lencioni. I live in the 200th block of University. And I also have a rental home that I rent to lovely family there. I just found out about this yesterday that they're proposing all these changes to Middle and University. It will definitely affect the south side of University from Middle. There's no question about it with a traffic circle. I believe the stop sign is just fine, but the biggest problem that I see, we put the horse way before the wagon, wagon before the horse. Nobody in my neighborhood, because I walk the streets today, and asked, I said, has anybody heard about any of this? No, 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 no flyers. And what I know is, you know, I, I've lived there since 59. I was very involved with the city when we, the general plan came back up, and I believe it was the 90s. And the light standards were put on the end of University on Cambridge Avenue. And they had these big ideas to close all these roads and make no less and no rights. None of it works. You, it's, it's, at least it wouldn't have worked. It didn't work then. You, 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 you can't close a road off, put traffic deter and slowdown devices on a very street that has some nice parks and the Rosner House, the Little House. When you go to these places, you need a place to park, let alone the poor residents that are going to lose all their parking. So I don't get it. The roundabout, all that's going to do is, and take away the stop sign is the way I read it. It's just going to turn University clear down to the creek, which is going to impede. It's going to destroy Partridge. It's going to make more of a hassle with the people on Cambridge and on Harvard. And they're going to back up further and try to get off of Middle Avenue down at Bay Laurel, and then they're going to, you know, on Arbor Road. It just, it just, I don't believe any of this is going to work. But, but you know, I'm willing to try anything. That's why, you know, it is protected. The biggest problem was most things never get taken care of. Once it's implemented, it stays there forever. It shows in, you know, those light standards on University and Middle. They were put up 25, almost 30, 25 years ago, maybe 30. They were supposed to put a nice sign on it that said Allied Arts. There's supposed to be a beautiful sidewalk that went around and so people get around. None of that happened. They put up two concrete structures. One falls over a tree. They just cut it down like, it's trash anyway. You, you know, so I'm sort of disappointed in all of this, but I believe the staff needs to, which they need and should have done a better job of notifying these people, people in the neighborhood. I was notified all my life about any other huge project that went on that would have adversely expected me. And when you put a cork in a street, it goes somewhere else. You know, I, I have no disrespect for what we've did on Santa Cruz Avenue there, closing off the street. It is nice. I hear it's healthy for the downtown. And I said, well, maybe I'm losing my mind in my old age. I walked downtown day before yesterday, and there are 15 see-throughs down there, meaning there's a lot of vacancies downtown. So how healthy the downtown is, I'm not really sure. So now we want to take that problem, run it down University, move it over to Middle. And it just goes on from Middle. They're going to go down Baylo. They're going to go down. I, I just think people should have been notified about this. I think it's just was really poorly done. And I hope you do not vote on anything tonight until we get the notes out to the people. Like I said, I randomly picked maybe 10 houses in my neighborhood.
Mr. Lencioni, your time has happened.
Okay. Well, 10 people, no one did it. I could get time from somebody else if you'd like, but nobody, and I didn't hear the buzzer go off. That's amazing. Anyway, nobody knows about it. So I think we should just postpone it till we get a better consensus. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker will be Jerry Jones, followed by Peter Olson.
Good evening. Thank you for working on these problems with, with biking. I'm a newcomer to the area compared to Bob Lencioni. I've, I've only lived on Cambridge Avenue 47 years. So I want to remind a couple, about a couple of things related to cut through traffic. But first I want to say I'm a big proponent for bikes. And my son, I heard one of the commenters, my son was struck by a car riding his bicycle home from Hillview School. He's now in his mid-30s and luckily he survived and wasn't seriously injured in that accident. We need better bike routes in Menlo Park. So I don't disagree with that. I applaud your efforts. Now, one of the things that, and I still ride, I commuted my bike and still ride my bike thousands of miles a year. I rode on Middle Avenue, I think, every day for probably the last 20 or 30 days I've been on Middle Avenue. And I was out sick for a while, so that's the only reason I wasn't on there. We need to improve a lot of bike routes in Menlo Park. Now, a little history. Back in the 80s and early 90s, there were a lot of problems with traffic on El Camino Real. I'm watching the time, trying to finish. And a lot of cut-through traffic ended up going down through Allied Arts because of the problems with the signaling and backup of traffic at Middle and down further on, towards Redwood City on El Camino. And so people cut through Allied Arts. We put in traffic calming measures after a lot of public discussions. That was 25 to 30 years ago. Those same things need to be considered around the other streets when this project, and as I say, I'm a big proponent for bike paths. And I know how my son could have been killed that day, and I want kids to be able to ride their bikes to school and across El Camino to Nealon Park, et cetera. But I think we've got to do a little more consideration of the design and make certain the public hears about this because I also, somehow I was asleep at the switch and didn't know this because I normally watch for these things, but somehow I didn't know this was coming. And so thank you all, and I just hope that you will consider and also to make certain, as I stated to the city council 30 years ago, scenario-based planning, you can forecast where a lot of this traffic's going to go. If it doesn't go down Middle because of the calming measures, it's going to end up going into Allied Arts and other communities, local residential streets. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Peter Olson, followed by Kaden Lee.
Hello, can we hear me?
Yes, go right ahead, Peter.
Thank you. My name is Peter Olson and I'm the CEO for Peninsula Volunteers, which owns and operates both Rosner House and Little House Senior Activity Centers. I'm here to speak for the small vocal minority, the seniors in our community who use those programs. I'm encouraged by hearing comments and discussion about furthering some conversations. As CEO, I can assure you, I was not notified about this until I caught wind from the gentleman walking into Little House, asking questions to where I reached out to city staff and learned about what was happening. To not engage the CEO of a senior services provider in your community is shocking to me. They are often the, the, the forgotten and the unheard. I believe in finding solutions, and I know we can find a solution to this issue. But I would like to solve the issues of what happens when you close parking on Middle Avenue and you flood the two parking lots at both Rosner House and Little House. They're unsafe as it is, and they put seniors at risk who move slowly, who are not as agile and can't walk long distances necessarily. So I just want to be able to speak out for them and to say, please continue this discussion. I know we can find solutions, but we need to be engaged. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So going to our in-person speaker, Kaylee, followed by Misha Cillian.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Lee and I live on Middle. I live in one of the apartments that are going to be affected. And we've got no outreach. The apartment complex, the way that it works is that there's a lot of residents kind of come in and out, who move in and move out. So the best way that we get our information is by flyers. And we've gotten the first one about the survey. And a lot of us in the complex had done that, but we didn't know about what was discussed in the last meeting. I personally think that parking restriction hours would be a good idea for the school time. I also have children who are biking. They did bike to Oakno, but now they currently bike to Hillview and MA. So I do encourage that. But the limiting for Um, but the limiting for school hours, if that's what you're more thinking of for the kids. Um, maybe starting at like at seven and then ending it at three, but the overnight parking is um, concerning taking that away. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Misha Cillian, followed by Sandy Napel.
Hello, good evening. Um, my name is Misha. I'm a resident of Allied Arts. I live just a couple of blocks from middle. Use the street pretty much every day. I have two little kids. Um, so we use the street on bike, stroller, walk, drive. You name it. And we often go to Lyle Park as well as Nealon Park on weekends and sometimes weekdays. Um, yeah, and I echo some of the comments made by, um, the residents from middle who say, you know, as a parent, the street certainly does not feel safe. Um, there, you know, places where the sidewalk just disappears. Uh, crossing the street, uh, places like Blake or Yale feels fairly treacherous where there's no stop sign. Um, because drivers going down middle, especially, you know, this is my assumption, ones that aren't local kind of see it as just a cut through street to get to where they're going. So they're trying to get there as fast as possible. And don't see stopping for pedestrians as a priority. Um, and of course, when I first moved here, seeing those safe route to school signs on the side of the road was kind of offensive. Um, and in terms of the outreach, yeah, I also personally feel like there's been an impressive amount of outreach, which I believe was said at the previous city council meeting and applauded by some of the residents. We had, um, city council members meet the public at Nealon Park. We had a survey with hundreds of responders and I believe there was about eighty people on middle who responded to the survey. Um, and there were signs on the street informing people of this project. There's a dedicated page on the city's website for this project. We can, uh, sign up to get updates. So, you know, to council members comes this point about losing trust. I mean, it makes me feel kind of the opposite, which is that we've been participating in all these meetings and providing feedback. And it felt like we got to a point where there was a lot of consensus on the plan. So now to sort of only approve to fairly small items of that plan and send the rest back to the drawing board doesn't feel fair. I understand the parking issue is controversial and it sounds like some people were caught unaware. I encourage the, the council to just consider the outreach that was done and not necessarily whether some people perhaps didn't notice it. Um, but I would recommend that we perhaps table the parking issue, but approve the other traffic calming suggestions like stop signs, race crosswalks, flashing beacons. I just think those are needed now and waiting another few months for whatever discussion doesn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Sandy Nepal, followed by Jeff Piper.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, and thanks for giving me the time. My name is Sandy Napel and I live on the corner of Blake Street and Middle. And I wanted to, uh, remind, uh, people who may have forgotten or others who just may never have heard this. But that the concept of closing, um, the intersection of Blake, uh, Street with Middle was based on us seeing just how much pedestrian, bicycle, um, traffic there is along Blake for people who want to get to and from Nealon Park. There are people pushing strollers. There are people walking with little kids that are on tricycles. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic on middle and the major motivation for, for trying to close uh, Blake Street at middle is, uh, based on the safety of that pedestrian traffic. Um, I also, um, want to, uh, thank the council for looking at this and for, um, proposing to, um, do a pilot because, you know, of course you never know, you do something and it may have unintended effects and I think everybody's willing to look at that. But it would be a mistake, I think, to delay, um, this closure at Blake, uh, and middle, um, which is motivated almost entirely by the need for better safety for all the pedestrian traffic that uses Blake Street to get to and from Nealon Park. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Jeff Piper, followed by Sally Cole.
Hi, this is Jeff Piper. Great. I, I'm also a resident of Blake Street. I'm a neighbor of Sandy's and my, um, uh, my comments are probably largely in line with what he just said. So, thank you very much for giving me this opportunity. Thank you for working on this problem. This has been a difficult uh, challenge, but I definitely feel like we're making progress. Um, I really also wanted to speak about the closure on Blake Street because as Sandy said, this is really about like making a safe corridor over to Nealon Park. Um, I know some of the comments were about feeling excluded and I, I feel like this is actually a move to make the street more inclusive and make the neighborhood more inclusive in that pedestrians, cyclists, people with strollers can more easily move into the neighborhood and out of the neighborhood. And this is a way for people to feel safer doing those things is to give them, um, the safe, a safe corridor. So, uh, you know, we are out on the street all the time, like we have a regular get together on Friday evenings. We get out most evenings and kind of like say hi to each other. And we talked to a lot of people about the plan and what's happening on Blake Street because we want people's feedback. And as people walk up and down our street, um, we have never once heard a negative piece of feedback on this. A lot of the neighbors are extremely supportive of us doing this. And like Sandy, we're just excited to actually see the progress here and see the movement to close this down and make, uh, Blake Street a little safer for the community. Um, as a side note, I'm also really excited about the traffic measurement on College Avenue. I think that data will be really useful for us to understand kind of what the impact is in the neighborhood and I'm really happy to see you guys doing that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Sally Cole, followed by Ryan Padres.
Hi, I'm Sally Cole. I'm in District Five. Um, I just wanted to provide some perspective um, as the Chair of the Complete Streets Commission, uh, to the conversation tonight. One is that I'd just like everyone to take a step back and think about the bigger context as to why we are even here. Uh, there have been years of requests from public, from my fellow citizens in Menlo Park to the city council to quote, do something about Middle Avenue. A lot of people have come forward in many years before I was even on the Complete Streets Commission to ask the city to slow down the traffic, to make the street safer and to think about, um, not just the kids on bikes, but the older citizens, as we've talked about, and the pedestrians who use that city, use that arterial important, uh, street on middle. It's been a long time coming and that's why we're here today. The second thing I wanted to do is to add to what Misha said, um, in his comment a few comments ago. Even if parking is being, parking removal suggestion as a pilot is being removed from the conversation tonight, there were several traffic calming measures that the staff very thoughtfully suggested that I'm personally confused if they're not on the table for this evening's resolution. Um, as Hugh, the Assistant Director of Public Works mentioned, obviously there's the closure of Blake and the stop sign at San Mateo. But what's happened to the other elements that were on the table, including, um, a lighted crosswalk or a blinking crosswalk on Arbor Road, which is right next to the senior citizen centers, as we know, that was requested many times over. If that's not included in tonight's resolution, I'm confused. I don't think I've heard one objection to it. And the second was, um, Ray, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Mueller had heard from his constituents about a raised crosswalk at Cotton. Why is that been taken off the table? Have heard no objections to that from the public. Um, in conclusion, I just want to say that to the members of the public tonight who came forward and said they hadn't heard anything about this, my conclusion from tonight's conversation as someone who's volunteering time on the Complete Streets Commission is that it's actually really hard to reach members of the public. Because I so respect the efforts that the staff has made in the past nine months. There have been huge digital signs on, uh, Middle Avenue to advertise the public meetings where we took a lot of robust public comment and a lot of people showed up and the volunteers on the commission that I chair worked till hours of the night to hear everything the public had to say. Um, Hugh's staff sent out a mailer to I think two thousand people, including all the residents of middle. They sent out a survey that six hundred people answered. This is the second public meeting the city council has held on this topic in the past month. And the proposal proposes many more forms of public outreach. So if people have other ideas for public outreach and how to reach you, I'm, I'm not being sarcastic. If the people here who said they weren't being reached have ideas of how we can reach you better, please send them in.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker is Ryan Padres, followed by Adina Levin.
Great, thank you very much. Um, my name is Ryan Padres. I'm a, uh, citizen here. I live on San Mateo between middle and Santa Cruz. So, um, I, a community member here that uses, um, Middle Avenue every day biking with my three children to Oak Knoll. And just wanted to reiterate a few points that, um, some others have made and, and add one more to this conversation, but um, I'm a, I'm a pediatrician in the area as well. And so I wholeheartedly agree with the sentiment that the current street of Middle Avenue is not safe for our kids. And, um, I really appreciate Sally, you bringing your perspective here, that this has been a year in the making. And I was so proud and so happy to hear about the commission finally moving forward with some plans, um, to, to make improvements on, on middle. And I'm really disappointed tonight to hear things slowing down, um, because that seems to be the trend we're going. Um, I strongly support all the measures that were discussed at the last commission meeting, including the stop sign at San Mateo where my children cross every day and that would be greatly appreciated, the speed reduction and most importantly, the pilot for the parking removal. I was, I'm just disappointed tonight to hear that there's possibly delaying in that because I feel like the time is perfect to act and put in forth the pilots today before, um, the, the plans for the, all that campus housing, uh, Stanford at the end of Middle Avenue opens up. And before, um, I believe that the biking traffic is going to dramatically increase in pedestrian traffic. And so I want to share a different opinion that I also agree with what Sally said, that I think the outreach was outstanding by this commission for this topic. Um, I'm, I'm a person who never has attended city council meetings prior to this and was well informed on, with multiple different outlets about this and all the previous meetings. Over sixty-two, I know parents from Oak Knoll signed a letter onto this and most of them had never been engaged in, in the city council process. So I think you all did a, a terrific job. I'm sorry that there's a few people out there that feel that they weren't informed about this. Um, I don't think that they're going to change their mind about the parking either way. And so it is a pilot. I strongly encourage we move forward with a pilot. It seems like your plans are very, very reasonable for a lot of different input. It changes that can be made after it's been put in place. And the final point I just want to make is, um, we're, we're forgetting about one other group that's not here being able to speak and that's all the children that use that road every day. As a pediatrician, I feel like it's my job to advocate for and, and speak up for their, for their voice. For the hundreds and hundreds of children that use it every day and for all the thousands of kids that will use it moving forward if we put some, the right plans in place now. So I really hope we can reconsider by putting the, the pilot in place for the removal of parking and we'll learn a lot in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Adina Levin, followed by Randy Avalos.
Good evening, city council members and staff. At, at the eleven, I, uh, was on the Complete Streets Commission, uh, formerly um, during the, uh, several iterations over multiple years over time where the idea of, uh, traffic calming and improving safety on middle has been, um, you know, uh, building and developing over, uh, a long period of time. Um, you know, I'm, I'm hearing that this, um, process is going to slow down to do some more, uh, notification and outreach. And, um, I, I do hope that the thoughtful process that has included, um, some really significant um, outreach and feedback, um, uh, will, um, uh, move, uh, move forward. Um, there were, that, that outreach included, um, six hundred survey responses. Um, I think eighty, uh, people attending community outreach and additional sixty people of the people of the survey were residents. So we are never going to reach a hundred percent of everybody and, um, you know, uh, doing some more um, uh, can be helpful, but at some point, uh, it'll be important to move a decision forward. I think the bits of outreach that I think are especially important are for residents of apartments who, um, you know, to assess what options that they do have and, um, uh, figure out solutions for people who may not, um, have other options. And, um, you know, cer- certainly people in, uh, Little House should have an understanding of what is happening and how the existing parking will be used. Um, a key point about the timeliness here that several have made is the Stanford development is going to be opening up and making things safer for people coming and going and giving people really strong viable choices not to drive to and fro will improve, reduce the traffic and improve the quality of life, um, for everyone. Um, and, uh, the point I'd like to finish is to build on the people who talked about the fact that this is proposed, especially the, the parking, uh, removals um, are being proposed as a pilot. And, um, as such, this is something that we can look and see and if there are unintended consequences, um, tweak or change or thoroughly alter, but it is being proposed as a pilot. That means that we can learn. And, um, uh, so, so that's a really strong approach that I hope to see moving forward soon. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Randy Avalos, followed by Ashley Callahan.
Good evening, all. Randy Avalos, uh, District Five.
Uh, Randy, uh, we're hardly able to hear you. Are you able to get closer to your microphone?
How's that?
It's a little better. Any closer?
Um, check, one, two. Any better?
You just sound kind of far away.
Hmm.
So maybe if you, if you're in a place where you can, if you can maybe speak louder.
One, two.
Perfect. Thank you.
God, sorry about that. Uh, Randy Avalos, District Five. Just wanted to make a, you know, observational comment that the fact that some people are surprised and some are not, um, says a lot about something in the process. Now, I know middle, you know, after a poor start, there was some really good outreach to a lot of people, months, if not years of outreach. And, uh, staff worked really hard, working with each group, community to narrow down a choice set. Um, to get a general consensus, which is fantastic. And then at the last meeting, that choice set, there was some scope creep which changed how people who was affected and how they were affected. And that's why we got the set of people who know they're affected and involved in the process. We have some other set. We're not maybe perhaps aware of what was going on and how they became affected. Um, so I just want to say thank you to the staff for all the work they did for the outreach. Um, the fact that people are surprised is perhaps a bit about the scope creep that happened in the last sessions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Ashley Callahan, followed by Peter Lee.
Hello, city council. Thank you so much for your time and effort and staff for, um, your efforts on developing middle Ave. Um, I would just like to help us, uh, encourage us to consider moving forward on the items that most residents, um, seem to agree upon. And I think that it would feel like a victory to the city council and the staff and the residents if we could move forward on items such as a stop sign at San Mateo and the closure of Blake Street and any of the lighted crosswalks or, uh, raised crosswalks or any of those slowing, um, the traffic down items that we can agree upon tonight. I think that moving forward on something that increases our safety of our, our city is a victory for all. And as a parent of, uh, kids who have biked to school for the past twelve years to Oak Knoll and now Hillview and MA, um, as a resident of Middle Avenue, I just, I think we can, the thing that was most discouraging about last city council meeting was that we weren't moving forward. And I think that if we could move forward on some of these items that most people seem to agree with and don't seem to require any sacrifice, but just add benefits to all would be, would be wonderful. I'd say the Blake Street closure, some resident on Middle was feeling like it somehow was harmful to Middle Ave residents. As a Middle Ave resident near Blake Street, the idea is not to close that parking off to Middle Avenue residents, but it's just to make that a safe passageway from Allied Arts to the park. And so I think that that can be a safe and win, a win for everybody. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your thoughtfulness and, and I'll leave it there.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Peter Lee, followed by Katie Beruzzi. And this will be the final call for public comment on regular business item G1.
Hi, I'm Peter Lee. I'm a resident of Middle. Thank council people for having this meeting. This notion that Middle Avenue is a dangerous street is absurd. I've had three kids go to Oak Knoll, Hillview, and now they're riding their bikes to MA. And Middle Avenue is not a dangerous street. I actually view it as a very safe street. I've seen kids riding side by side scooters in the middle of the street, and I have not seen any accidents or incidents with kids. There have been, I'm not saying that there haven't been incidents, but it's not because cars are speeding or doors opening from parallel parking. As for the stop signs, I'm not sure if we really need one on San Mateo. I think everything works safely. Everybody waits across the street. I haven't, I drive the streets daily. And there is a couple of cars at speed, but speeding, I don't think is a major issue. I think the biggest issue that we have is the children riding in packs and bikers not paying attention. So I ride my bikes with my family on Middle and around Menlo Park. And we feel that the city is very safe and the streets around Menlo Park are safe. I ridden on my scooter and skateboard up and down the streets and haven't had incidents with cars, and I'm not the most careful person. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. So our next speaker is Katie Beruzzi, followed by Joe Newbar.
Hi, council. Katie Beruzzi. I served on Complete Streets Commission, speaking for myself. A lot of good points have been made tonight, and I think that I really appreciate some of the comments from the families that have not necessarily engaged yet with the city on topics. I remember the first time I engaged with our city on the Oak Grove bike lanes and how hard so many people worked to try to move that project forward and how demoralizing it was when it looked at the last minute like maybe it wasn't going to happen after all. And, you know, I think we ended up going forward with the trial on Oak Grove, and it was not sort of the end of the world the way everybody thought it was. And also, there were a lot of creative solutions for some of the problems that residents along Oak Grove brought up that were addressed in the context of the pilot. So for example, I actually think it might have been Peter Otaki who had this idea. We created a carve out for drivers to do some like grocery drop offs on one segment of Oak Grove. And there were, you know, there've been different things that people did. But it's definitely a much more safely used stretch of our city. And I hope we can do the same with Middle. And I really hate the idea that people who've participated in good faith in all of these outreach events, not just the surveys, but also a lot of the public meetings, won't feel like we're going to keep kicking the can down the road forever. That said, of course, I mean, we can always do more outreach. And very specifically, I think it is incumbent upon our city to solve for the issue of the five on-street parking permits that are associated with the apartments between University and Fremont. I've heard that in previous years, there have been as many as 12. I think it's important for us to acknowledge that, you know, there are a lot of people who are making lower incomes and don't have off-street parking. And this isn't about their, you know, cleaning services or whatever. This is about like, they have a car and they bike to Stanford and they're grad student, and that's the housing that they can afford. And so we should, we should try not to, to make their lives worse in this way. And I do agree that talking with Little House is important. I was a little confused until I remembered that Rosner House is very close to Middle. But I have confidence that these are problems that our city can solve. What I don't love is the way it feels in our city when we take like an eon to get something done. So I hope that we can walk and chew gum at the same time. And finally, I'll just reiterate what Adina Levin said. The whole reason Stanford's being asked to pay for some of these mitigations is because the traffic situation is going to dramatically change when that building opens. And also, when the undercrossing happens, we are expecting to see a lot of different kinds of bike traffic, not just school commuters. So I think we are planning ahead, and I appreciate the outreach. And I hope that we can move forward with most of this and work with people who are going to be severely impacted as we go along. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our final speaker will be Joe Newbar.
Thank you very much. As a 20-year resident of Central Menlo Park and a frequent bicyclist in the area with our kids going to Oak Knoll, Hillview and MA, and a frequent driver of Middle, I, just my observation that I don't believe that vehicular speeds are a problem on Middle. I also feel like the intersection at San Mateo is not a high-volume intersection for cross-traffic in terms of vehicles. And I don't think that a stop sign there is going to increase safety for bicyclists. I think it's going to cause more potential for conflicts where bicyclists are in a position of whether or not they're supposed to slow down or stop, and cars are not sure whether or not they should proceed or not, depending on the, you know, bicyclist momentum, especially coming from the bike bridge. I think it creates a lot of conflicts. I don't think it's necessary to slow down the traffic there. I would, I would agree with Mr. Lee that spoke two speakers ago that my, my experience over 20 years is a very safe environment. And I would be very cautious of adding more controls on that street in the, in the name of safety, where I don't really think it's warranted, or I don't think there's a nexus for it. So I would, I would urge the council to be careful about thinking that that's some sort of a cure for some problem that does not exist. I appreciate your time and your consideration as we obviously as residents, we all want the town to be as safe a place as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Seeing no further hands or speakers in person. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the many speakers who have spoken tonight. It is great to see everyone engaged, and we will try and get some answers. I have two questions before we open up for more discussion. And that is, first of all, with the traffic calming that was mentioned, my understanding was it was not in the resolution because it's a given going forward. Can you please?
Yes, yes. The simple answer is that there, there is no resolution item that council needs to act on. Obviously, that's essentially something that the way, it's sort of at staff's discretion. However, we did bring it to you to get direction. We did get direction. Those items are moving forward. So you, we don't need it to be in a resolution for us to move forward.
Do you need more direction on it?
I don't think so, because I think we got very clear direction at the last meeting.
Agree. Thank you. And then just more for the public. Generally, the 25 miles per hour, as you said earlier, is also coming forward. That is also was moved along and is coming on a separate track with the other streets. Any more comments?
No, that's, that's really it. As it's just slightly more complicated. And some folks in this room know that we have this nice, long document about all the ways in the vehicle code you can set speed limits. It's, it's more complicated than it, maybe it should be. And unfortunately, there's a few hoops we have to jump through before we can get there.
Thank you. Let me open up for discussion. Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, just a quick question. Can, can Mr. Loud sort of outline exactly for the record what you're considering traffic calming, that you got clear direction from council to, to, to implement?
Sure. Yeah, the items. And would you like me to bring up the, I could bring back up the slides if that helps. One second. Okay, so it's essentially the raised crosswalks and where they haven't already been installed. So this particular flashing beacon has been installed. So that would be the item. It's the speed feedback items. Moving in the right direction. Then again here, right, the raised crosswalks and speed feedback signs and the rectangular flashing beacons. And then, you know, speed hamper, speed table and raised crosswalk. Those are generally speaking, the, and flashing beacons, the traffic calming elements. We presented last time there in the exact same locations that they were on the 13th, and no change has been made.
Thank you. And I know some residents will be very excited to see the raised crosswalk and the flashing beacons at Arbor. They've been waiting anxious, anxiously for that by Lyle Field. I guess one. Absolutely, please.
One of the early public commenters talked about that Blake Bean just permit parking only or something that can someone, is someone able, I thought this is what I heard him say. If, is someone able to sort of explain? If not, then we'll follow up. But.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Combs. We're not aware of any permit parking proposals for Blake that are advancing. Our understanding is that the closure is what's proposed in the resolution tonight. So we're happy to follow up on that, but there are no staff proposals for permit parking.
There actually is restricted parking right now, which I was surprised to learn about the other day. As I believe it was a reaction to people parking from Nealon Park, but it is currently, there is some restrictions for certain times of the day.
I understood. And there are permit parking restrictions throughout the Allied Arts neighborhood that relate back to the car dealerships that were located where Stanford's Middle Plaza is currently under construction. We can check with our police department who issues the permits, but because there's been limited daytime parking enforcement, we are unlikely to have issued many permits in any recent years, so we can, we can follow up with that.
My understanding from residents is there is no enforcement at this point. So I guess I want to return to a couple items. And that is the comment that this is sort of a fait accompli, that this is already, everything's been decided. In the report, it says that the attached resolution authorizes staff to pursue this direction. I, and the, my understanding is the pilot, actually, there is still robust outreach as described in the report. And that this basically a resolution would provide the opportunity to start the design and do some of the outreach, but that it's, there is nothing that's, there's a direction, but nothing is definite yet.
So the resolution off, the way the resolution in the packet is written, authorizes the parking removal, the stop sign installation, the Blake Street closure, the roundabout. So technically, at that point, we would have that authority to do it. The schedule that we've laid out has that happening at a future time. So in terms of design, you know, if you were not wanting us to move forward with the resolution at this time, we can, we can take your general direction to move forward with a design of a particular project. I think from a staff perspective, we would be uncomfortable doing that without the authority because then we would spend a lot of time doing that and then come back. And then we might be doing something else at a future time. And so given all the things that need to be done, we feel much more comfortable just to know what we're working towards and know that we can make modifications to it for sure and through outreach. But any fundamental change and then what was later authorized, then would sort of mean the work that we did would not sort of, would have to be redone.
So not to go too far down this path, because I was suggesting that we bifurcate it and don't do the parking today because of the lack of notification, not outreach, but notification. But I would like to clarify. So my understanding, well, I will just state, I am, having spoken with residents, I am concerned about the legacy apartments and the parking for the legacy apartments right now, five permits. But there's definitely more apartments that are involved. And my understanding is that there's no restriction that someone in the future, that we could have more permits in the future. So my assumption was part of the outreach that would be happening as had been approved, but if we were to approve the resolution, would include how to handle that and that that wasn't necessarily off the table. It was part of an outreach effort, that that was not definitely, although the intent was the direction would be with both sides of the street parking removal.
Right. Yeah, no, I think that's, thank you, Mayor Nash. I think that's exactly right. If we were to be looking at a, you know, certain number of blocks where we made a modification to the design to accommodate a particular issue, that is certainly something we could do. And we could do that now, or we could do that through the design process. I think the concern of staff would be more if there was a sort of fundamental change to what we were working towards.
Councilmember Combs.
Yeah, so like I, I'm confused, right? And so, I mean, the whole point of the resolution is that it puts in place the removal of parking, right? And so whatever pilot project you're doing, the core fundamental part of it is that all parking on the street gets removed, right? And so at that point, the engagement, the outreach is just an FYI. Because there is no fundamental design that you're going to go through that involves keeping some parking because you've gotten direction from the council through the resolution that all parking should be removed. And so, so in, at one point, you said, Mr. Loud, well, technically, yes, but it's not technically yes, it's just yes. And so, and to me, this is the frustration because you do something as this council that impacts people's life, but then you're not even transparent about it, right? And I do, not you, the council. But I do want to, since I came up a couple of times in public comment, I do want to address this, this issue. One, is that like, maybe I have a different benchmark than other people because, you know, there are so many things in which government has a complete and total monopoly. And so for me, the benchmark, the standard, is not that I do outreach. It is that I know that you know, right? I know that you know what is going to happen because I am the government, because I have power that you can't do anything about. And so that's how I see it. And so we can, you know, give ourselves gold star for all of the outreach that we think we did and all of the consensus that, you know, people in a room think that they reached. But what we've gotten here is a clear signal that there are key stakeholders who did not know. And maybe it's fine if you're sending out a flyer, but if you're the government acting in a way that's impacting how people exercise and use their private property, you have an obligation to make sure that they know. And we did not reach that here. And, and also to those people who want to talk about the great outreach, we had the president of Peninsula Volunteers saying, I did not know. This is a key stakeholder on that street saying, some random guy walked in and said, hey, have you heard about this? So how do you respond to that with all of the, 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 the accolades you want to give yourself about the outreach? That you have a key stakeholder on that street in two different spots saying, I did not know. My standard is that government has an obligation to make sure you know. And that's not what, what's happening here. That's not what you're saying is that we'll remove the parking and then we'll give you an FYI. Make sure you know so that you can engage in the process. So you can exercise your rights as a member of the community, as a citizen, as a resident. But if it's already in the resolution, if it's already happening, then you don't have any ability to exercise those rights. The other thing I wanted to, to bring up is that people brought up this issue of safety. If someone can present for me the clear case that the only thing and the safest thing on the street is removal of all of the parking, then I will engage in that discussion. But what people have said is they brought up the word safety. You know, I work at a place where it says data wins argument. No one has presented any data that removing all of the parking is the only way to ensure safety. There are some people who argue that removing parking and creating a wider area actually makes things less safe because cars didn't go faster. So I, I just want to be clear. The issue that we're talking about here is the removal of all of the parking. We can have discussions about all of the other things that have a more limited impact on people. But the decision to say that we're going to, which I think that a council has never done, that we're going to remove all of the parking in the name of safety without any data. And that we are not going to worry about informing those people who are going to be most impacted. The final thing I want to say is, is a couple of the, the, the public commentators set a vocal minority. First of all, we don't know who the minority is. And there are several moments and times throughout history when if people had listened to the vocal minority, things would have ended out better. So let's not engage in the rhetoric of discounting people and what they say because you say that they are a minority. That is not the discussion that we should engage in.
Thank you. So let's actually, to make sure that we get through everything tonight, let's get back. I think there is a lot more to discuss at some point about the parking, but I would like council. Does anyone object to holding the parking at this time for a future meeting, which I would hope would be in the near future, realizing we have to work out schedules. But is there any point, is, is there, does anyone object to focusing on San Mateo Drive and Blake at this time?
Councilmember Nash. Yeah, I don't have an objection, but what I request is that when it's brought back, that the dueling resolutions be brought back. The one that was before council last meeting and then the one that's before council this evening. And I, and I, I, I mean, we do have a difference of opinion between the two of us. So we probably should get council direction on whether or not there wanted to be notice or outreach. And my big concern in that is that I was, as I indicated in my prior comments, and I, and I raised last time, the outreach to the church and the outrage and the outreach to the senior serving facilities. And now the, what, what has been raised this evening also to the apartment buildings. You know, I, there's just, so folks, I know everyone's, everyone's advocating strongly for what they want tonight. And I, and I understand that. And I'm feel at peace that we're moving forward with traffic calming and we're doing a lot of, there's a lot of things that are moving forward to make the street safer, but we just have to, it's just not fully baked yet with everybody at the table to understand what all the impacts are. So for that reason, want to make sure we do that outreach to those stakeholders, bring them in and have the dueling resolutions and we make the final decision. So yeah, I do support the bifurcation this evening and and look forward to the next time we all get to talk about this together again.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I think yeah, there's two roads we could take right now. One is to wait. And one is to move forward with direction to, actually, well, first, let me ask Mr. Louch. If people can't park on, that live in the apartments, if they can't park on middle, is there anywhere else for them to park?
They can park anywhere. Actually, the parking permit allows them to park in other locations, not specific to the street.
Just to elaborate on that a little bit, there's also parking removed now on University toward town. So they could park on University. They could park on University from University to Creek Drive. They could park on Yale from University to Creek Drive. They could park on Fremont from Middle to Santa Cruz. I will just add, I've, having spoken to several of the legacy apartments, there are individuals who have situations where they need close parking. So that's one of my concerns.
Thank you. So going back to the two roads, one is to, I forgot what the first row is, to wait. And the other is to approve a resolution. And I guess I'm looking to staff if this is even a possibility. With direction added in a motion to examine the apartment parking, potentially looking at carve outs that could be added in that landscaped area as Councilmember Combs and Ms. Beruzzi referenced from Oak Grove to also to work with Rosner House and Little House on their parking lot, the, the safety concerns, the parking concerns. And so I guess first my, is giving that type of direction even an option while we move forward? And are there mitigations that you see are available as to look at in tandem with continuing to move?
Yeah, I think, thanks for that. So I think in our conversations with our attorney, the understanding is that if you, one thing you could do is, is obviously the, what's on the table now, any sort of reduced parking removal. So retaining some of the parking could also be contemplated at this time. And we, we actually have some exhibits with some that we sort of prepared ahead with some of the locations that have been particularly mentioned. So that's an option that you could consider. And then in terms of alternates that are not, that still remove all the parking, but maybe like try to do other sort of physical infrastructure changes. We could certainly take that as direction as something we could look into. But I, I will say that's, you know, it's one thing to do one space, you know, in one location. It's a little bit different if we're talking about multiple locations, many spaces in terms of really the costs of that project. And then drainage becomes an issue and other sort of things creep in. So if it was sort of like, well, we want you to find a couple of spaces that, you know, certainly might be feasible, might not be feasible at the beginning necessarily, but it's certainly something we could work on if it, if it's providing, you know, so it depends on what your direction is a little bit.
Can I actually shortcut this for a minute? Let's, let's focus at this time just on Blake Street and Blake and San Mateo Drive. And then we can go into the, the parking after. But I'd like to first, given that it's 9:46, focus if you don't mind, on Blake and San Mateo Drive. It sounds like you are interested in possibly talking about the parking. In addition to that, but let's, let's save that conversation until after we get this other piece nailed down.
That's fine. I definitely have more to say on the parking stuff.
Actually, I don't want to respond right now because I want us to stay focused.
So that being said, I'm, I'm ready to move forward on the San Mateo Middle stop sign. I'm fine piloting the Blake. I, when you're looking at that streetlight data, I didn't see any analysis on College closer to El Camino. Cause I'm wondering if folks are going to be that used to use Blake that are now going to have to use College. If, I really want to look at the impact of circulation. So I'm actually not the best one to tell you where to look at, but I'm just wondering if we're cutting off that street, the circulation impacts. And then, like I said, I'm, I'm fine piloting it for my colleagues. I am a little concerned about any precedent setting. I do see it, you know, it is kind of like the safe route to Nealon Park. I don't want other residents to start filing petitions to close off their streets because I think having more open circulation points is better than fewer. But as long as in the pilot, we are, if you take a look at, at that and have some type of proposed metric for that, that would be great. And I know that's going back to complete streets before.
Yeah, we, we can easily add additional data observation on the other side of Blake on College.
I would just like to add, my understanding of Blake is there also is an issue with people doing U-turns there that it actually facilitated some unsafe driving behavior on Middle. And also any left turns onto, from Middle going toward Olive onto Blake was creating some unsafe situations in the pedestrian because people were going around the individuals. Anyway, there was, there were reasons other than just facilitating a nicer pedestrian bicycle infrastructure there. Councilmember Taylor, do you have comments on Blake or San Mateo Drive or anything that's not parking right now?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, did you, you've already weighed in. Do you have anything more to say about Blake and San Mateo Drive?
I'm fine with Blake as a pilot and moving forward with the stop sign at San Mateo. It's fine.
Councilmember Combs, okay, and I am fine too. Would someone like to make a motion?
I think we're actually going to hold off on a motion if, if, if possible, until we get through everything because staff needs time to revise the resolutions as necessary if, if that's, if that needs to happen.
Okay, so the other question on the table is the parking removal. And I will go ahead and say, I am not comfortable moving on parking today because I do not feel that there was adequate notification. That is different than outreach. What I'm talking about is notification of this meeting. And so I would actually, I have no problem moving the, the coming back to this soon, but I believe that people I spoke with knew about the project, had been involved in outreach, but were not aware of this meeting. And that's where my, where I am holding my personal line. Councilmember Combs.
Where, where is the traffic circle? And is that, is that?
Oh, thank you. The traffic circle. So the other piece is, yes, the traffic circle, which is at University, and that is a decision whether or not we proceed with that right now. Go ahead.
I would only ask that, that, whoa. I guess because at the end of the day, like I would say, I would want the traffic circle to be its own item. But then at the end of the day, this is all going to be fed into a resolution, right? And so I, I think the question is like, where is there three votes for the most number of possible things to go into the resolution? So again, I, I'll just be clear. I'm not supportive of, of the traffic circle, just where I am. I like traffic circles as an idea. And, and I think I'm okay with possibly testing them out in less busy intersections. And so, so, so that's where I'm at. Again, not supportive of complete removal of parking, not supportive of the traffic circle. I am supportive of, of the Blake closure, although I do share some of the vice mayor's concerns because, you know, it's, it's nice not to have cars going down your street. And so I, I think we have to be very clear about what, what are the standards, if any, or what are sort of the key things that are being triggered that says that, that this is a scenario where we're okay with it. And, and yes, I'm, I'm supportive of the stop sign.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Willison.
I know we've been badgering you guys a lot on timing, I'm talking to staff. When, I mean, is there any way for this to come, for you to notify people and for this to come back before the end of the year? Or is it just like, and have it, Stanford do it?
Just as a comment, the notification, I think, is very, very simple.
Yeah, definitely understand that sending out the notification is simple. And I think there's an agenda space, significant agenda space problem. And then the other observation I would make is that if there's a desire to do more outreach, then the beginning of next year is not even possible. Because we would, that would take time. And that's just not in our schedule right now for staff to do that work. So if we're doing more, sort of further outreach on the project, and I understand that that's not a settled question, but since that's been raised, I just want to observe like, we would need to get that into our schedule, do that outreach and then come back.
Madam Mayor?
Please.
Oh, thank you. So I'm very troubled letting this slip. I think I, I've been, I listened to all the comments, you know, read everything. I do think that working with Rosner House and Little House to figure out some of their parking lot things, I don't think that's insurmountable. I'm kind of curious to see what, what's up your sleeve with the ideas on the apartment block. But I, I, and I, I think those concerns are legitimate. I think there's a, a solution and I'm open to revisiting that block. But I, I think, you know, what's going to change the next time we have this meeting? And then like, this is just how these projects go. And they're like people, they've shown up and I get that we didn't reach everybody. You know, I, I just, I think what, you know, what, what's going to be different, these things, we could go 20 rounds on this. And so I, I think the concerns have been brought to light. Maybe it was a little clunky at the end. But now, now we understand, but I'm just very concerned that this slips through the crack, that Stanford's not going to do it. We have resource constraints and to have someone else be on the hook for, for doing the work is huge. I just know that these things get, get lost and we're going to be waiting another couple of years to do anything. And we're just going to be waiting for, for something to happen. And more and more people, there's a constituent of mine, I think in his eighties, who just got an E tricycle. I mean, more and more people are out there every day. And this is a real concern that many, many people who aren't here tonight, but that who showed up all along the way have expressed. And a lot of people that are not engaging, but who, who think that their voices are being heard by the folks that they've elected as well. And so I think I really want to keep moving on this. That's where I stand. But I know I'm one vote and the will of the council is the will, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I am in support of postponing the parking mainly because of the, the noticing. And I am in support of the, of the other items, the stop sign, the race cross, crosswalk, all of the traffic calming measures. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
So I am hearing from every, from hearing, so where I am now is I'm in support of postponing, talking about the parking, but, and I'm sorry if it's frustrating to people, but when your outreach hasn't included the senior serving facilities on the street as well as, you know, I have concerns whether the church was included and also the apartments. That's where all the density is on parking for the street. And so, you know, for that reason, if you want to bring it back simply with just noticing, again, I'm going to reiterate. again, I'm going to reiterate my request that you bring it back with dueling resolutions, with the resolution that was initially brought forward to us with staff's recommendation last time. And I'll just forecast to everyone, I'm probably going to vote for what we had last time. If, uh, with piloted, because I, I can't imagine going into a meeting two weeks from now saying, I'm going to be comfortable voting to remove all of the parking on the street when I know we haven't had that interaction with the stakeholders on the street who serve the seniors and who's like, who provide the density on the street. So it's just, it's not, we already have enough pushback from residents on the street to have these, the areas where there's true density on the street, not really have been engaged in the stakeholder outreach process. I can't imagine moving forward with that design right now. And that's just, you know, it's, it's frustrating, it's unfortunate, but it's the reality of where we're at. And so, um, I asked, you know, if you're really going to move forward with only notice only, please bring it back with both dueling resolutions for to be considered that night.
So Councilmember Mueller, I can, um, tell you that I have met with the church. I've met with apartment, um, folks, there are more people to reach, but people have been engaged. I've not met with, uh, with the Little House people. I will turn it over to Mr. Louch to add.
Yeah, and maybe just to clarify, because there were questions about that. And, and certainly, um, the first time we spoke to Mr. Olson, who's the CEO, was after the 13th meeting. We had been previously in touch with, uh, staff, um, at the Little House and had some conversations back and forth by email with them about the project. And, uh, we're keeping them apprised and notified of the, of the meetings that were coming. That I don't think that communication made it all the way up. Um, and definitely respect that, um, it's important to have a conversation with him. And then certainly that happened, I would say, very quickly after the 13th, uh, which is when the sort of removed parking from both sides became the direction that, that we had received. And then we did have a couple of conversations and, and it continued to keep him apprised that, uh, the conversations were going to be happening, um, at this meeting. Um, and then we've also had the conversations with folks, um, at the church, uh, and certainly understand their needs. And happy to, you know, have any sort of further detailed conversations as needed about, you know, what the kind of options are to, to manage, uh, the concerns that have been raised.
Yeah, but respectfully, and I appreciate, I, so here's the issue that I have with both things that was just said. And I, look, I appreciate everyone's working hard on this. I'm not like, I'm trying, I'm, I'm not, everyone's acting in good faith and trying to get stuff done. And I know we're short staff. But Councilmember Nash, you saying you've had discussions and those aren't captured in the report. And then staff saying they've had discussions and that's not captured in the report. And then being asked to vote for it, um, based on that will all work out. I can't, like, I can't, I, I'm not going to be able to, there needs, the cake needs to be baked more, as former Mayor Rich Klein used to say. So, uh, you know, I'm, if, if we really are going to be moving forward just with notice, and this is coming back super fast, I'm asking for please both resolutions to be brought forward. Thank you.
I guess I would like some clarification still, as actually Vice Mayor Wilson, you've.
So Mr. Louch, you have, um, mentioned there's some other renderings in your pocket. I just, if this is going to come back, I, I'd rather see it sooner than later. So we have it so there's not a surprise if we have two resolutions and there's like a third option.
Yeah, so, um, as I said, I, our understanding is that, you know, you, either tonight or at some future meeting, you could approve a reduced version of the full parking removal. We've noticed full parking removal, so if you remove less, that's okay. And if you're interested, I can share essentially responding to some of the issues that have been raised about parking. And essentially what it is, is places where parking would remain. So it's not so much cutouts or other kinds of changes like that. There are other things that we would do, um, you know, more, as I mentioned, around the Nealon Park parking lot. So that's not reflected in this, but I'm happy to, is that, would you like me to share that?
So I guess my question is, given that it's 10 o'clock at night, um, we're not going to be approving the parking tonight. I don't think there are the votes there. What is the best, what is the most expedient way to move forward and also to get information? I certainly am still eager to get this moving. I just do not, I, I, as has been stated, the notification was insufficient this time. But that's different than the outreach. I am fine moving forward with it, assuming that we will take in, this is not tonight with more notification. Assuming that we will take into account the legacy apartment folks. Take a look at how we can accommodate parking there, how we can accommodate parking of the church, if it can be accommodated, um, what the suggestions are. What is the best way? I don't think tonight is the night to go through all these different options. How do we best do this?
So I, I think at this point, what would be most effective use of everybody's time is if we could take a five minute break and we can confer as staff and hopefully bring back some suggestions for, for how to best move forward.
That sounds very good. Thank you.
Having our city council back on our virtual and in-person days, Mayor Nash, you may reconvene the meeting.
Thank you very much, City Manager Justin Murphy.
Great, thank you Mayor and Council for the opportunity for the for the break for staff to discuss this. So what we I'll just do a quick recap and then proposal. So just in terms of the four basic topics regarding stop sign, Blake, roundabout, and parking, I'm going to quickly go through those. So with stop sign and Blake, we are in the process of having that resolution revised, be able to present to you shortly. So we would like to be able to to do that this evening. In regards to the many roundabout, at this point in time, we'd like to exclude that from the resolution for consideration tonight. So I I definitely heard from some council members, not all, but from a staff perspective in interest of time, we think it's best to not include that tonight. And so the last topic brings us back to parking. And so we do believe it's best if it comes back for council consideration at a future meeting. So I just want to talk through a couple of things that have come up. So one is regarding schedule. I can't emphasize enough that we've got some a number of things at play. I don't want to necessarily talk specifically about exactly when something may come back. We will do our best to bring something forward. But what I would like to do is focus in on the lead times. And then I would appreciate some clarification about notification. I'll talk about that in a second. And also options. So in terms of lead times, I think at whatever point in time, we can identify the date. We'd like to make sure that we have at least that date is known at least two weeks in advance. So I just wanted to kind of confirm in terms of lead times. That would be one question for the council. The second is some a direction clarification about notification. And so at this juncture for that sort of lead time of two weeks, what would be involved with notification would be the email to the subscribers of the project list. So that's that's kind of the key thing of terms of what we can fully commit to to meet that two-week lead time. And then the last thing I'll talk to is about the options. And so we are are prepared to be able to bring, you know, multiple resolutions options for consideration to the council when it does come back. So that's kind of the summary of where staff believes be most productive to move on to next steps on this topic. Happy to field some other any questions about what I just said. Others are available as well. There is recognition that we do have some other business items on tonight's agenda, and some of them are extremely time sensitive.
Thank you very much. And I have to say, I accidentally shut down my Zoom. So if someone else sees Councilmember Mueller or Councilmember Taylor, please go ahead and call on them. I would say I think two weeks is excellent. I would like to see if possible, the the information pushed out to all city subscribers, just so everybody knows. So someone who's not on the list would still receive it and be available and also that and to make sure that actually, I'm sure that the newspapers are aware of it. So that sounds very good to me. Other comments? Vice Mayor Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. And then City Manager Murphy, what about my request to see the the ideas? I mean, could that be in the staff report that comes for when it comes back?
Yes, I think the in terms of being able to present options, yes, we'll try to present the universe of options, including ones that were contemplated for this evening. But I don't believe it's in the best use of time to show those tonight.
Thank you very much.
That sounds great. So no, there's no, we do not know when to go back on the schedule at this point, just that we will have two weeks notice whenever it does. And that staff will try to put it on as quickly as possible. Given all the constraints we have. Thank you. Is there a motion and a second on the table to? We don't know when it will be. I don't, I mean, do we?
Sorry, through the mayor, as a as I sit right this second, this evening, based off all the other considerations, including upcoming item on your agenda related to the city's housing element and some other time-sensitive projects, I would not like to commit to a specific date this evening.
Thank you. So I will move that we proceed with the resolution of Blake Street Pilot and San Mateo Drive. Is there Councilmember Combs?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution, which I'm going to display on the screen and read into the record. So folks are clear on what is being removed. There's a resolution of the City Council of the City of Menlo Park authorizing. And this is stricken installation of no parking zones on both sides of Middle Avenue. We're still including in the reso installation of an always stop at Middle Avenue and San Mateo Drive. We are striking replacement of an always stop at Middle Avenue and University Dive with the University Drive with a roundabout with yield control. And we're retaining the temporary closure of Blake Street at Middle Avenue necessitated by the Middle Avenue Complete Streets project. We are also striking two of the whereas is number seven and eight related to California vehicle section 22507 in section 11.24.026 of the Menlo Park Municipal Code. We are striking a now therefore be it resolved at the City of Menlo Park authorizing the establishment of no parking zones on Middle Avenue on both sides and Exhibit A. And we are also striking a further resolve City Council of the Menlo Park does hereby authorize their move all-way traffic control at Middle Avenue and University Drive to install a mini roundabout initially as a pilot. The remainder of this resolution will be in effect. And as read into the record, it is authorizing the installation of an always stop at Middle Avenue and San Mateo Drive and authorizing a temporary closure of Blake Street at Middle Avenue using temporary materials. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wilson has a question.
My apologies.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I will be voting that I will join and vote for the resolution, but that I am disappointed that this is going to potentially be delayed quite a bit. And that I think our community needs to think about what kind of community we outreach. We we're going to be doing and who it's for and how, yeah, what the cost of the status quo is in addition to the cost of change. So that's all I want to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other city council question or discussion? Now seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller. City Councilmember Mueller, your vote? I apologize, I might have missed it. City Councilmember Mueller. I know that there was some technical issues before. I will go to City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
I'll give City Councilmember Mueller another opportunity to vote on item G1. Okay, and the motion passes with City Councilmember Mueller absent.
Thank you. And thank you so much to staff for hanging in there with us. Really appreciate it. The next regular business item is the same staff members. G2, provide direction on the process for recommending stop sign installation and consider adopting a resolution to install stop signs at several intersections. To introduce the item is Associate Transportation Engineer Kevin Chen.
Hello, everyone.
Kevin, you sound a little far away.
Is this better now?
Oh, that is wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Sorry, there was a second of a delay. So I wasn't sure if I froze or so. Apologize. Give me if you can give me one second. I'm going to go ahead and start showing my screen. If I can just have a confirmation that you're seeing the full page of my title slide.
Yes, thank you, Kevin.
Great. Thank you very much. It's a good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Kevin Chan, Senior Transportation Engineer with the city's Transportation Division. So I'm very happy to be here tonight to present the item to you. In light of the hour, I will try my best to read through the presentation. However, there are still spots where I would like to highlight for the sake of just clarification. But again, happy to answer any questions you might have at the end of the presentation. So the item before you tonight specifically has two directions. One is to provide direction for the City Council to provide direction to staff on how we evaluate a stop sign request. And then the second is depending on the outcome of the the first item, to consider some specific locations where we have received a request to do so. So I'm going to briefly talk about sort of the process itself. As many of you might know, typically when city staff receive a request for a stop sign, it usually comes in the form of an email, a phone call, or perhaps a public meeting that that sort of gets mentioned passing. So generally, a stop sign request will come in the form of a resident request. Typically, what would happen afterward is we will start collecting information. Because in order to install a stop sign, we typically and in this case usually involves a always stop or a always stop. So there's a set of warrants that that we need to assess and evaluate, which is mentioned in the staff report. So I'm not going to go into much of the details. After we collect the data, we'll start our evaluation. And depending on the outcome of the evaluation, we'll then bring it forward to the commission and then the city council ultimately for its approval. So here's a slide with the existing practice that we have, as well as some of the pending updates, which is why we're here this evening in front of you. Just so that you know, the current practice, as I mentioned, involves a set of warrants for a multi-way always always stop. Typically involves volume based on vehicle volume as well as pet and bike. Typically involves collision, which is set within a certain amount of time, as well as delay. So those are more what we consider to be quantitative criteria. There are also some qualitative criteria where it is less numeric and more so just the determination based on engine judgment. So as like, as we can see, it's identified in front of you. As we, as I noted a little bit earlier, there are some anticipated changes. So here is a on the bottom is a quick timeline of some of the some of the national guidance that we are we are receiving, which again has to do with why we're here in front of you tonight. So here is a quick slide of the anticipated changes from the federal level. Do you want to highlight two critical elements? Second row, where it says collision history, that you can, as you can see, there's definitely a desire to to make the collision history a little bit less conservative, meaning, you know, a lot of times giving a city of our size is really hard to achieve. So I think there's from a national level, there's a desire to really make it a little bit more fitting for 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 various sides of the city. I also want to point out the last row, which is the qualitative criteria. As I mentioned before, there's already a number of bullet points that falls under the back category. As you can see from the the second column, the bottom of the second column. But now there's an additional qualitative criteria that is being proposed to be added on to the existing list, which is the improvement of pet and bike movement, which I will go into a little bit later on. So focusing on those two particular items, we actually brought this item to the completion commission back in April of this year. And with that, the the initial recommendation from staff was to implement those changes. And again, with the qualitative criteria, the quantitative criteria, which has to do with the collision data, staff recommended that we further further modify those numbers to better fit the city of Menlo Park, again, the city of our size, to be able to to really enhance and highlight the safety factor. And then for the qualitative criterion, which again has to do with improving the pet and bike movement. Initially, staff's recommendation was to identify that in terms of user groups, which means if it's a set of students, that would be considered a group. If it's commuters, that would be considered as another group. And through the discussion with the commission, there were feedback, there was a feedback about a better 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 description of it to to really look at the volume distribution rather than just kind of focusing on the user group, which we then took into consideration and brought that in front of you tonight. So what ended with all that discussion, what ended up is essentially kind of that last row that you're seeing. So like I mentioned a little bit earlier tonight, we have two specific recommendations. First is to seek your guidance in terms of advancing the use of the evaluation process. So again, focusing on really honing in the number for collision and also the definition of the pet and bike improvement. And if if the city council has a desire to approve those, then we will look at some of the existing requests that we have received thus far. And the reason why we're doing that right now is because using the existing guidelines, we are really not seeing the result to warrant a stop sign installation. However, with the additional modifications, we do see some definitely some improvements in those areas, and they are divided into two separate categories, which I will have the next two slides to to go over. So the first category, what we consider to be kind of the top priority. So here are the three specific locations, Menverin and Ringwood, M and Pope and Wanda and Pope. Really, it has to do with the fact that after our evaluation, these locations clearly met the qualitative criteria. And and then this has to do with some of the recent incidents that occur, as well as sort of the characteristics of the roadway. So without being really a really major bicycle route between lower and upper lower school. And of course, with the with the location of Wanda and Pope, it really has to do with site visibility, as well as some of the ambiguities that goes on to the existing configuration. So in staff's opinion, we believe that these three locations definitely want immediate implementation of an always stop. So in staff's opinion, we believe that these three locations definitely warrant immediate implementation of an always stop. And moving on, we could consider sort of the rest of the intersection requests as sort of the secondary. And what that generally means is that it's not as clear that it fits the warrant, even with the incorporation of all the, you know, anticipated changes. However, staff is recognizing that these are, again, primary locations for, for schools. In the case of Elm, in the case of Gilbert and Pope, it does, it acts, serves as an access point to, to school routes. And of course, with Terminal and Del Norte, I think this one is probably the closest to maybe moving on to the top priority, because it does serve, you know, multiple user groups. When the MPCC eventually opens, we're definitely gonna see, you know, a really well-used distribution throughout the day. How, so however, you know, at this moment in time, we are putting it to, but we can easily see that move to the top priority as well. So before I conclude my presentation, I just wanted to kind of quickly highlight a couple of things. One is that, you know, in the interest of time, the idea is that we're bringing everything to you. The resolution, as you might have read, includes all the intersections that we have to identify on the list. And the idea is that if it does get approved tonight, in terms of the top priority, we'll go ahead and start implementing as soon as we can. With the number of this, for the second priority, staff's intention is that we'll do some additional outreach to local residents, stakeholders, just to make sure that they are, you know, well aware of the implementation of these changes that are coming, and also making sure that their feedbacks are heard. So as I mentioned in sort of the, sorry, one of the slides that I passed quickly, is that for the secondary locations, we intend to conduct some additional outreach and then report back to the city council if we receive substantial opposition. If we don't, then we'll just go ahead and implement them, assuming we get your blessing tonight. And then of course, with the secondary set of locations, if the city council's desire tonight is that we want to hold off on doing any of the always stuff, we can also explore some additional signing and striping improvements to, to, to address some of the concerns that we have heard. So able to be essentially separate from your, your always stop implementations. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. City Clerk Karen, please call for a public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item G2, provide direction on the process for recommending stop sign installation and consider adopting a resolution to install stop signs at several intersections, please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. And if participating in person, we ask that you step up to the podium. This will be the final call for public comment on item G2. Seeing no hands, Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. So this item is now open for city council discussion. Is any discussion or Councilmember Combs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm made it a point to, to visit all of these intersections this weekend. Some are, are very close to me, so I didn't have to go far. I'm supportive of, of all of them. I'm also supportive of the staff's prioritization. Yeah, so that, that's where, that's where I am.
Councilmember Taylor or Councilmember Mueller, do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I'm supportive of the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wallison.
Yeah, I have two questions for staff. One is regarding the second tier priority outreach. And I'm curious, like, I don't know if we're using the tiers model, but like, what's the objective of the outreach? Is it to notify? Is it to seek feedback? And then, how would that be weighted against the, the other qualitative criteria that's already been examined?
Great, thank you, Councilmember Wallison. So perhaps tier is not the right choice of word, so I apologize for the, for the use of that word right there. But you're absolutely correct. Sort of the intent with the additional outreach is that we wanted to make sure that, that, so these locations have not, we have not yet gone out there and, and sort of kind of done the outreach necessary for what we would consider to be an always a stop sign implementation. So recognizing that while these are definitely, you know, locations that have been brought up to us by residents, we also wanted to make sure that we, we get out and then get the word out as much as possible. I would say, generally speaking to your question about how this would compare to, to the sort of the top priority locations. In staff's opinion, I would say these locations are certainly meeting, maybe not quite to the, to the extent of meeting all the criteria that is outlined. And by, in this case, I meant including the newly anticipated changes as well. However, they are at very central locations. So as I mentioned with Elm and Gilbert and Pope, and to definitely at the next extent, the Terminal and Del Norte. So while there is not as a clear, as clear as the, the top tier, staff believes that these locations still warrant the, the always stop consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. I just, I have, I know that there are folks, especially in the Willows, who are just philosophically opposed to stop signs. So I think we're gonna hear from people that are not gonna want them. And I'm just wondering what we're gonna do with that information. But I guess we'll deal with that when it comes our way. The second question I have is that we received some emails today about Santa Monica and Coleman, which is an intersection that parents have been asking for a stop sign at for many, many years. And I'm curious what the process would be, if it can be added to the second tier list, and if it would meet those criteria, because I know that the qualitative criteria is much wider now.
Right, so yes, thank, thank you for mentioning that. I meant to make a note of that too, part of my presentation as well. So we, we heard from several residents that they would like Coleman and Santa Monica to be considered as part of this effort. And we definitely heard that feedback. And one of the things that we're, we'll need to go back and consider is how to best implement that request or at least evaluate that request. We could either do it as an independent one, or as some of you might know, the county currently has a transportation study effort for Coleman and, and Ringwood. So I think it would be best for staff to evaluate sort of the timeline for those, for both trajectories and see which one would be the best served in terms of getting the, getting that evaluation done as quick as possible.
And if I can just add one thing to Mr. Chen's comment there, which is that much like middle, where you just approved a stop sign as sort of as part of a larger effort. So the thinking, and I think, Vice Mayor Wilson, we've probably talked about that specific location at another time. So certainly aware of it and was thinking of the Coleman-Ringwood study that, you know, we're an active participant in that. And so it's a good opportunity to think about it as part of a larger whole. So that's, that was the thinking of staff. But if you wanted to give us direction to move faster on it, we could certainly move faster on it.
Thank you for that. And while I am very excited about the Coleman-Ringwood study, the timeline of that versus the timeline, especially given that I've been talking about a stop sign at the intersection of Coleman and Ringwood for, since my kids were in second grade, and my daughter's in high school now. So I'm, I'm getting tired of waiting for large studies. So I would like to add, I'm very supportive of all of these. I would like to add direction to speed up the Santa Monica and Coleman location as well. And I'd like to see if I have council support for that.
And, and I just wanted to add, and yeah, definitely supportive of Santa Monica and Coleman. To the Vice Mayor's point, I actually, I just don't like sort of dispense the medicine. I take my own medicine, did some knocking on doors around these, these intersections this, this weekend. And, and generally in those areas, there, there was support. And again, this is a late night, but regarding the, the, the Gilbert-Pope, there, there were like, I think, five or six residents who talked when this came to the Complete Streets Commission. And so I think to your point, though I do know that there are some people to your, who are, who in the Willows, who are, you know, by default opposed, and, and if you're doing, gonna do anything on Gilbert, you're, you're gonna impact everyone in the Willows, and so, so we'll, we'll hear. The sort of full circle moment I will point out, though, is that one of the residents at the corner of Gilbert and Pope said that there used to be a roundabout in that intersection. And I think it got moved because of opposition by neighbors in the Willows.
Yeah, I believe there's still a website called like The Willow's Hoax, or Willow Traffic Hoax, or something about all the engineering in the Willows. It's a special place.
Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I actually had a question for Mr. Chen pertaining to the intersection that Vice Mayor Wallison wanted to add. Would that intersection naturally fall under the criteria that you're proposing?
I think if we take into consideration the upcoming proposed changes, then, and then certainly, I think there is some additional, I guess, yes, I think that it will be a better opportunity to, to meet those criteria.
Thank you, and I am supportive of adding it. And Mr. Chen, I have one other question. I believe, I'm not sure if it was a Complete Streets Commission meeting agenda item, there's a map that shows high pedestrian injuries due to traffic accidents, whether it is someone that's walking or someone on a bike. Are tho, those intersections, and it's throughout the city, those would fall under the same criteria that you're proposing as well? Or would we need to add some criteria to make sure that those intersections that have already been identified are included?
Right, so perhaps maybe we're talking about the map from the TNP, perhaps? I know that the TNP does have a map that shows kind of collision based on the travel type. I think that's certainly something that with the approval of this item tonight, sort of opens the door for, for evaluation of those locations. We just need to take a look at what's, what's the existing configuration, and then also making sure that the always stop is a viable option in this case. But certainly, I think there is, it does open the door for that evaluation.
Thank you, and just one last question. For a resident to bring up a concern about an intersection that they consider, would consider needing a stop sign, would they go through the process of going to the complete streets? Would they come directly to you, or would they come to the council?
Right, yeah, so I'm glad that you asked that question, because we do that question quite, quite often at the Complete Streets Commission as well. But, but certainly, I think, you know, the Menlo Park residents more than welcome to, to reach out to any of the transportation staff here. And they can do so via email, via a phone call, or if they see us on the street doing a project, more than welcome to just kind of flag us down and talk to us about it. I would say typically, we would get those feedbacks by one of those forms, and then staff will have an opportunity to evaluate the request. And then, and then of course, if the, if the, if the request is, is meeting the criteria that we are, that we are looking at today, tonight, then the natural next step is to bring it to this commission and then the city council for approval. That's, I would say, that's kind of that linear process.
Okay, thank you so much.
Is anyone ready to make a motion in a second? Councilmember Combs.
I'll, I'll move the staff's recommendation adding Coleman and Santa Monica.
Vice Mayor Wallison.
I'll second, thank you, and thank you for your support.
Councilmember Taylor.
Can I just clarify, so we can take direction to add Santa Monica comments, not in the resolution, so you can't approve that one tonight, but we'll take it as direction and we'll have to bring it back.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please state the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Combs, and a second by Vice Mayor Wallison to adopt a resolution to install always stops at the following six intersections. Van Buren Road and Ringwood Avenue, Elm Street and Pope Street, Elm Street and Central Avenue, Walnut Street and Pope Street, Beacon Streets, Pope Street and Gilbert Avenue, Terminal Avenue and Del Norte Avenue, and convert the two-way stop sign at Elm Street and Laurel Avenue to face the Laurel Avenue instead of Elm Street, and also direct staff to include a stop sign at Santa Monica and Coleman. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wallison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have consensus to continue past 11 o'clock?
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Mayor Nash, I apologize for coming back late to the meeting. My, I was operating on an iPhone and it malfunctioned and died. And it took me quite a bit to get back into this meeting using a different apparatus, so my apologies.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. So the next regular biz, or the final regular business item is G3, Consider and Adopt a Resolution Approving the Water Supply Assessment for the Housing Element Update Project. To introduce that item is Principal Planner Tom Smith.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and City Councilmembers. In light of the hour, I will try to make this a brief presentation. But the slides are available in the packet that was published today. So very quickly, the item before you is to consider a water supply assessment for the housing element update. And the WSA is required because the Housing Element Update Project would demand water that would be equivalent or greater than 500 dwelling units or more. And the WSA is to evaluate whether sufficient water supply is available in normal, single dry and multiple dry years through the year 2040. Just to make sure it's clear, approving the WSA is not a commitment of the city to serve water to future housing projects, and it would not consider endorse the merits and/or approve the housing element update. Approving the Menlo Park Municipal Water portions of the WSA would allow the city to incorporate the document findings into the project's environmental impact report. And so very quickly, the proposed project that we're discussing is the Required Housing Element Update, which covers the period from 2023 to 2031. And in order to meet our regional housing needs allocation of approximately 3,800 new housing units, the city is looking at planning for up to 4,000 new units through zoning changes, accessory dwelling units, current pipeline projects. And there's also some future additional cumulative housing growth through the year 2040 that's being included here. And so to give you an overview quickly of the map that's on the right-hand side of the screen, the parcels that are in dark red are the identified housing opportunity sites from the housing element. What you see in the pinkish color is Cow Water Bear Gulch District, which is another water district. And then the Menlo Park Municipal Water District is in blue. So you can see the bulk of the, the dark red parcels are actually within the Cow Water Bear Gulch District, but Menlo Park Municipal Water would serve a number as well. And actually, actually, to be a little more specific, about 1,790 of the new units would be in the municipal water district. And then the 1,790 housing element units that are being studied in the municipal water service area would generate new water demand beyond what was projected in the municipal water 2020 urban water management plan. And that amount of demand is about 267 acre feet per year, which is highlighted in this green circle on the chart at the bottom of this slide. And so that that additional water demand has been added to each of the the five-year increments studied in the urban water management plan. And I would note, this is a conservative approach to analyzing the housing element demand, since new housing would likely be developed over time. And not all at once in in the year 2025 window, as is shown here and and every it's counted essentially in every five-year window thereafter. And so the water supply availability, it really there's an element of it that's some level of uncertainty, which is the the Bay Delta Plan Amendment. And that would require release of 40% of unimpaired flow of three San Joaquin River tributaries from February through June. And so the WSA evaluates findings for a scenario where the Bay Delta Plan Amendment would be implemented, starting next year for a more conservative analysis. And then to give you just a quick overview of the summary of the findings, essentially in the more conservative analysis. So with the Bay Delta Plan, in normal years, there would be sufficient supply for the housing element units. With the Bay Delta Plan in a single dry year, there would be 32 to 37% reductions required. In multiple dry years, there would be 32 to 47% reductions required. And so to address those shortfalls in the single dry and multiple dry years with Bay Delta Plan implementation, there would be implementation of the water shortage contingency plan up to a shortage level of five. And at that level, Menlo Park Municipal Water would utilize the emergency supply well that was recently constructed. Without the Bay Delta Plan Amendment in place, it's a a little more relaxed. So there would be sufficient supply in normal years. In a single dry year, there would be a 3% reduction through 2025. And then thereafter, there would be sufficient supply. Similar situation in multiple dry dry years, except that in the fourth and fifth consecutive dry year, starting in 2045, there would be a 16.5% reduction. So that would be a stage two shortage level in the water shortage contingency plan that would need to be implemented. So the staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution approving the water supply assessment. And again, that's not an approval of the proposed project itself, but simply approving the document indicating that the water supply has been evaluated for the project. And briefly to go over the next steps. In October of this year, we anticipate releasing the draft subsequent EIR for the housing element update. And then there would be a 45-day public review period. Also, this month, we anticipate comments on the city's draft housing element from the Department of Housing and Community Development. That should be coming in the later part of this month. And staff will be working to address those comments. In November of this year, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the draft subsequent EIR. And then in the November to December timeframe, we intend to release the draft environmental justice and safety elements, which are companion elements that have been worked on along with the housing element. And so with that, I will conclude my presentation and and return it back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on regular item G three, consider and adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment for the housing element update project. Please engage that hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're calling in from a landline or a cellphone, you can press star nine. For anyone in person, you may step up to the podium. This will be the final call for public comment on item G three. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. We are now open for city council discussion on this item. Vice Mayor Willison.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, Mr. Rogers, if there if you have any sense of when the Bay Delta amendment plan, plan amendment is going to be resolved one way or the other? Because it's quite a difference in outcomes for everyone.
Yeah, that's a great question, and it is pretty unclear at this time. I know that there are some lawsuits and different matters that are being worked out behind the scenes. And so in terms of timing for implementation, if that were to happen, I don't know when that decision will be made. So for that reason, that's why we we chose to go with that more conservative analysis in the event that it would be within the next year even.
And thank you. I would just have a request. If and when there is a resolution to that, you let council know, because that's good information to have. Thank you. Other than that, it looks like it is what it is. And we better all start changing our lawns to drought tolerant landscaping per conversation last time. But I can make a motion to adopt unless anyone else wants to do it or has more comments.
Please.
All right, I'll move to adopt the resolution to approve the water supply assessment for the housing element.
Councilmember Combs.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk Karen, could you please read the motion and call for the vote?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Nash. So I have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Willison, a second by City Councilmember Combs to adopt a resolution approving the water supply assessment prepared for the proposed housing element update project. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none by roll call vote, City Councilmember Combs.
Yes.
City Councilmember Mueller.
Yes.
City Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Willison.
Yes.
Mayor Nash.
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Information items are transmitted to the city council in staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, do we have any public comments on the informational items?
Thank you, Mayor Nash. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our information items, H one, city council agenda topics, H two preliminary considerations for commemorative park amenities, or H three consideration of recommended sustainable reach codes to be included in the upcoming adoptions of building standard codes. Please engage that hand feature bottom of your screen. Calling in from a landline or a cellphone, please press star nine. For anyone in person, please approach the podium. And this will be the final call for public comment on our information items, H one through H three. Seeing no hands. Mayor Nash, you may continue.
Thank you. Are there any city council questions on any of the information items? Moving on to the city manager's report. City Manager Justin Murphy.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, thanks for the opportunity to report. I think the main thing I'd like to identify this evening is that this Thursday, we do, the city council does have a meeting here in the council chambers, 5:00 PM to conduct interviews of potential planning commission applicants. So at one point in time, there's a potential joint meeting with the fire district that we were contemplating. Realizing there's a need to focus on the planning commission interviews now, we will be working with the fire district to schedule future meeting, a joint meeting in the in the near future. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Are there any reports from city council members since the October 11th city council meeting? City Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor Nash. I have a few meetings to report out. One is the SFO Community Roundtable Meeting that was on October 5th. Few of the items that were discussed was a was a subcommittee update, which I'm proud to say that I'm not on, which is the technical working group meetings, the legislative subcommittee meetings, and then ground-based noise subcommittee. There is an upcoming portable noise monitoring meeting that is on Monday, October 24th from 12 to 1:30 PM. That is open to the public. The second is the CRG, the Stanford Community Resource Meeting. There is information on this. There was an update to the community, the Stanford Community Plan, the draft. And it was actually discussed at the Board of Supervisors meeting this morning. So I don't have an update from the meeting from that. And then the last is the San Mateo County Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency District. There was a meeting on September 26th. Two primary items that were discussed and their emerging policy on an overview of current climate science, the need for countywide planning guidance and district guiding principles. The second is a template for general plan and zoning ordinance documents, including requirements related to buffer zones and easements along the San Francisco Bay and local creek for flood protections. The remaining items that I have on my list are actually brief report out from the Subcommittee for Reimagining Policing. We were only able to meet briefly this past Thursday, which was the 13th. And that was primarily to my schedule. So we will hopefully have an update for the council soon. The second is the Community Amenities Draft that was on as an informational item about a month and a half ago on the council agenda. Mayor Nash and I did a little bit of outreach at a community meeting for District One on October 6th to make sure that the community has that draft. And we are hoping that it is on the council agenda for consideration sometime soon. And that's my report out. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for all the information. Any other report outs? In that case, we are adjourned.